Thank you everyone, thank you for joining us today. This is our regular meeting of the city council and this is our joint city council successor agency housing authority and successor housing agency regular meeting of Wednesday, October 18th, 2023. So I will call this meeting to order at six oh four. Again, thank everyone, those that are joining us here in our chambers and then also those that are joining us via Zoom. Just a couple of reminders before we move forward and how you can join the meeting tonight. You can join via Zoom. The meeting ID is located on the agenda for today. It's eight seven three three nine zero eight eight one seven five. You can also join via telephone and it's one six six nine nine hundred six eight three three. The meeting has also been streamed via Facebook, but just to note the comments that you make on there will not be recorded. You do need to join the Zoom meeting and we do have a translator also for the meeting. Okay, so can we get roll call please?
Mayor Anna Velazquez.
Here.
Mayor Kocan Ben-Hamish Jr.
And just to just to let council know that he is ill and that he indicated he wouldn't be here. So it's an excuse.
Councilmember.
Here.
Senator Abraham or Leo.
Here.
Councilmember Fernando Cabrera.
Here.
Okay, perfect. So at this time we'll move on to public comments on closed session items. So at this company member of the public may address the council on items appearing, closed session items appearing on the agenda. Speakers shall have minimum of three minutes. Please be brief and to the point. And we have on our close session item, we do have one item and it's a city council will recess to close session pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight to give instructions to the city's negotiator concerning the sale exchange lease of property located at five forty Gavilan Drive, Assessor Parcel number zero two two four four one zero one six zero zero zero. Do we have any public comments on closed session items? So seeing none of the chambers, do we have any from those joining us via Zoom?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we will close up public comment for the closed session items and at this part, at this point we will recess to closed session and we will return at six thirty for our public portion of the meeting.
Thank you everyone, thank you we are now be comming from closed session. And I will turn it over to our city attorney to record on our closed session items.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council, the council met in closed session regarding the property identified at five forty Gatlin Drive. The council provided direction to a real property negotiator and no other reportable action.
Thank you, so at this time we'll move on to our collective meetings. And if we can all please stand and I can have the honor to do some effective reasons. So we'll move on to our next item on our agenda and that is. Our additional modifications to the agenda and we do believe we have two items. On our agenda for additional, item B three and B four and so we need a vote on that.
To add the items to the agenda. Yes, Madam Mayor, council, I'll represent to the council that and both of these items meet the requirements of government of section five four nine five four point two. And that they are issues that arose after the agenda was posted last Friday. And there are also both issues that are somewhat urgent and cannot wait until for action until the meeting of November first. And so what we need as in this particular case to add the items to the agenda, we need a forfeits vote which basically means that we need a unanimous. Yes, so we need to have a motion, you can take a motion for them on an individual basis or you just have a motion for both of them.
Okay, so can we put the motion for both of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't move.
Hold on a second then.
Okay, so we have a first and a second and that's for resolution to add resolution number sixty thirteen. And to add item before resolution number sixty fourteen in accordance with our city attorney's guidance of it needing the requirement to be added to the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries unanimously. Okay, so those will be added under business items three, three and four. So we will move on now to. Our next item on our agenda and at this time it is. We have public comments and so at this time any member of the public may address the council on items that are within the jurisdiction of the council. You do have three minutes, please, if you're here in our chamber, if you can please come up to the podium. If you have three minutes, please be brief and just again, just some of the meeting reminders. We do have a Spanish translator, so if we do need translations, please let us know. And then just making sure that everybody, as we're making public comments, that we're respectful, refrain from any making any personal attacks or derogatory comments. So at this time I will open it up for public comments from those that are here in our chamber.
Madam Mayor Velazquez and member of the city council, my name is John Lewis. And I'm a board member of the Sunday student board. And the last time I addressed the council. And the last time I uh addressed the council, it would be because of the memorial thing, you know, it was looking really bad. And that's gonna be seven months from now, so uh we didn't have enough money to get our caretaker help. At that time I wasn't in the works, I didn't have enough money. So this time, you know, we're gonna have to credit you better, maybe we might have to get volunteers to making the cemetery for memorials day. But the thing that really concerned me is we're running out of spots to bury people. There's only so many spots left. And when those are filled up, as much as I can save, people are gonna have to go to other towns to be buried. And like so they, I know they charge like five thousand a grave, San Jose is ten thousand. My best friend had his wife buried outside in San Jose, he had to pay sixteen thousand for a grave. And most people, you know, they wanna be buried here, it's all dead, it's more affordable, you wanna be buried your own time, you don't wanna go another town, so something's gotta hopefully, I don't know what's gonna happen now. Because once this, once they're filled up and whatever, uh one once we have left in the grass, there's nothing, you know, there's no alternative. Uh thank you for giving me a chance to speak.
Thank you, John, and just so for the public know, when we're doing public comments, we don't respond, but we appreciate John coming here as part of the Soladet Cemetery Board. I know that was issues that we've heard concerns from our community, so thank you for for coming here. Any uh other public comments from those that are joining us here in the chamber? Okay, then I'll take it out to Zoom if there's any public comments for those that are joining us via Zoom. Okay, and I do see there's one hand, um okay, Fernando, if you can unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I I mean, it's Fernando on Saldo Sanchez. Resident of Solidad, I'm sure you all know what I'm about to say, obviously, I've been saying it for how many months now, I just wanted to say uh my disappointment in the passing of the five district map. Um I think that it's something that's detrimental to our city. And the community spoke, the community wanted a four district map overwhelmingly. Um so I just wanna make that clear, I also wanna say that I don't really appreciate um that basically all of the comments we had made in our September meeting were taken, reworked and used by the three council members that were for the five districts as their own kind of talking points, so basically what we what we all said, they kind of reworked it to make their talking points since they couldn't figure out what to say during their September meeting. Um so obviously upset about that, and then also I just wanna ask the council to reconsider uh the housing element and to put a pause on that. Um and that's basically all I have, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other public comments from those that are joining us via Zoom? Okay, I don't see anyone else, so then at this time, before I close up um the public comment period, did we have any written public comments that came in today? Okay, so with that, there was no written public comment, so I will close the public comment period at this time. And then we will move on to our next item on our agenda, which is council presentations, and today we have three council presentations and um we'll begin with a proclamation. Uh this is a great one, a proclamation of the city councils of the city of Solidad will be presented in honor and recognition of our senior water system operator, Gama Liel, Gama Romero, for his dedicated service to the city of Solidad. So will we have um I see Tom. Okay, well, I will start, I think. Well, I will start. And it's our honor, Grandma, um to present this proclamation to you, and I really wanna make sure that I read this because I think our community needs to know um just the history that you have in the city of Solidad, everything that you've done for our residents of the city of Solidad. And you've been there at all times, I know anytime I had a question, you were always there available um and dedicated to our community, so this proclamation is in honor and recognition of our senior water system operator, Gama Liel Romero, for his dedicated service to the city of uh Solidad. Whereas Gama, Gama Liel, Gama Romero uh commenced his service with the city of Solidad in April of nineteen eighty six, when he assumed the role of maintenance worker. Gama worked in all areas of public works for many years until the various divisions of public works were established. After which Gama worked in the water division where he worked his way up to senior water system operator till his retirement in October ninth of twenty twenty three. And whereas Gama's tenure with the city of Solidad has been thirty seven point five years. And whereas Gama has genuinely been a pillar in the city of Solidad's public works department for almost four decades and is well respected for his hard work and integrity. His caring and loving spirit is enjoyed by everyone. And whereas throughout Gama's tenure with the city of Solidad's public works department, he has taken numerous training courses, certifications, and continuous education courses required by the California State of uh Water Resource Control Board to gain and maintain his license as a certified grade T two water treatment operator and certified grade D four water distribution operator. Gama's work ethic and dedication have earned him the respect of the community and staff. Whereas in addition to all of his work for the city, Gama has been married to his wife Maria for forty one years, congratulations. They have three children, Uriel, Marlene, Ruby, and one grandson, Damián. The city owes a debt of gratitude to his family for graciously allowing the city to consume so much of Gama's time and energy during his thirty seven years of work on behalf of the city. So now therefore this um it we proclaim that the city council of the city of Solidad take considerable pride and pleasure and drawing particular attention to the accomplishments of Gama. Romero through this proclamation does hereby honor, commend and congratulate Gama for his exemplary service to the citizens of Solidad and we wish you uh much happiness in your retirement. So this is a proclamation for Grandma and I will, I don't know uh if there's a few words that um Don, if you wanna share and then uh Gama, if you wanna share a few words as well.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and as Mayor just explained, Gama's had a very long career with the city of Solidad, we got a fantastic barbecue lunch celebrating his uh retirement today. And all the staff showed up, it was amazing, the stories we heard and all were consistent that Gama is here as a proud resident of Solidad, as a proud worker to this uh employee of the city of Solidad and the consistent message everybody gave is he was here to help everybody and anybody with anything at any time. Uh my first day here was a holiday, I I started uh with Adela Gonzalez. She um wanted to meet me on a holiday of January second, we were closed, so um get ready for Gama to meet me in a wastewater plant with Adela to meet. And Adela mentioned to me that Gama has been here forever, he's very helpful. If there's anything I need that she can help me with, starting off here, ask Gama. Um Gama has established, the Solidad staff is kind of um has a reputation of acting more like a family than a working. Um that's the way Gama treated everybody, so I think he's one of the uh people that started that institution, that we do treat each other like family, not just coworkers, so yeah, the words of gratitude and enjoyment of working with Gama, his attitude has been fantastic, you ask a contractor, a developer, an engineer, um everybody knows Gama, they need to know where anything is, they know Gama. Um so he's his work here has been much appreciated, his enjoyment as a pitiful worker has been much appreciated. He's well respected and uh he's just been a gift to the city of Solidad, so thank you, Gama, for your service, uh a lot of friends here, we hope you enjoy your retirement thoroughly and don't forget us. We're gonna play a video of Gama's life and career here, have why he doesn't finish, or he wants to speak first.
Yeah, I'll speak, everyone will speak to a video and then you.
Great.
Good evening, everybody, uh so quick, I'm just most of public works manager for the water department, been with the city thirteen years, Gama has carried me on to work here, so and I just kind of do a rough, I mean I can write about about Gama, but try to condense it as short as possible, but meaningful, so. Uh real quick, Gama was born in a small town of Uxpe. And arrived in the US in January nineteen seventy seven. He was sixteen and a Mexican immigrant, arriving in the US and his family came to work and to seek a better education. His work started in Arizona, Polexico, before arriving to Solidad in the summer of nineteen seventy seven. Having limited education, Gama attended Gonzalez High for the summer and continues continues education at the boat center. At a young age, he continued to work for the Harvest Iceberg, Lettuce, Bruce's Church, their own company. And then he received his GED and completed a mechanical certification at the T in nineteen eighty. From nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty six, Gama was a truck driver and to the city of Solidad hired him on April first nineteen eighty six. Gama started as a general maintenance worker and a volunteer firefighter and two years later worked in the water and sewer distribution. Gama was the first employee to receive his distribution treatment license, certification license. At that time, there are only five hundred customer connections, six wells and one elevated tank. And the city growth is now up to forty two hundred meter connections. During his thirty seven and a half years, he had seen employees come and go, retire and move on to other jobs. Also during this time, he has seen twelve directors, nine city managers, eight mayors and they and many city councilmen and councilwoman. He mentioned to me that when he was younger, in his thirties, all our all all old timers will tell him that time will go by fast and soon he will be returning, of course, he didn't believe them, so now I've been working for the city for thirteen years, one thing, Gama is that he's always worked and stayed busy, he's never, I never seen him slack off or have any downtime, always on a goal and saying, hey, we must do this, we have to do that. The dedication to his family, work and community was his motivation to always provide. The community know who Gama is. Gama, turn my water on, tell you later. A lot of times. Contractors and vendors are always asking where Gama is and how he's doing. One last comment is that this is not the way he wanted to retire. Originally planned was to continue working until his daughter receives her bachelor's or master's degree until she finds a job. Then he was gonna retire and shows a dedication and love for his family. Through the years, Gama has always bring a smile to work. Best of luck, Gama, congratulations on the next chapter in life.
We're not city kids. Thirteen here, so thank you guys for putting that together, that's amazing. Thank you.
The one thing that I really uh thanks for that is uh the day I got fired, I'll never get. It was uh my information reveal, they were the best man, councilman, Jim Lego, councilwoman and uh uh Johnson Veda. And also the chief, Ben Hemanis Senior. And uh the interviews were these. They were kind of tough and they were impressive, my answer. And uh they took a decision on hiring me and two days after the interview, I had another one with the city manager or Herripan. And uh he was kind of afraid that uh I was making the wrong decision because the salary that I was coming from here was completely offset. Salary was, as a driver, it was like ten times more than a regular maintenance operator for the city of Solidad. And I brought up to the pension that the reason I came to Solidad and I need it is because I have a family and my goal is to make a living in the community and to get my kids, all of them, see him as a a family. And that's the reason I came to Solidad, not because of money. But uh he was impressed and he kind of decided to give me the job on the first of April, making a shift. And now today, again, I'm glad to see that the councils are kind of recognizing whatever it came for Solidad. Solidad is growing as a big community. And there's more coming up. I try my best, I always challenge the positions, I never was afraid of it. But unfortunately, time ends. And the new beginning for me, and I really wanna thank you guys gonna take up and keep Solidad moving on. I really appreciate the recognition.
Thank you, Mama. After, I believe your daughter, Ruby, from Meadows, also on um on Zoom.
Yes.
Yeah, so do you guys wanna say just a few words?
On on that, I have my oldest friend, my, this is my oldest daughter and my younger daughter. The only one is an engineer and victim. He worked for the San Juan County Water District, twenty one districts. And she's in LA. And my wife, been here forever, but younger daughter is in Chico, she's in school and couldn't make it.
Okay, but. She's on Zoom.
She's on Zoom.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so she she can make it because she's on Zoom. Yeah, she's here, Ruby, do you wanna uh say a few words uh for your dad? Yeah, she's here, Ruby, do you wanna say a few words uh, for your dad?
Hello, yes, hello everyone, hi dad. Of all, um, thank you to the community today. Um, my dad has always been a community person and I think one of the biggest lessons that I've learned from him is. To always get to know where you live and get involved and through his community service. Um, I've seen it a lot growing up from both him and my mom as well. Um, so that's a, a life lesson that I'm going to take with me, but um, I'm really happy that I got to join via Zoom today and. I'm really happy that I got to hear all of the stories that you all shared about my dad as well. So thank you and dad, um, I love you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for joining us, Ruby, thank you. Hi everyone, I'm Marlene, I'm uh, like my dad said, the oldest da- of the daughters, I have an older brother, um. Thank you all so much for the recognition of, of my dad, he. We saw how hard he worked for this community our entire life and not just really, sorry, I, it's hard to not get emotional. Um, because it wasn't just for the community, it was for us. We're three college graduates and all of that is because of them. So. I know it's not how we wanted to retire. But he got us through college, that was the goal. My sister's about to be done and so um, your job is done and, and we are um. We're good now because of, of them, so thank you for recognizing. You know, we experienced him being a firefighter, we experienced he, him getting calls on weekends because a water pump burst and needed to come and take care of it. And so um, just thank you for recognizing because he did work very, very hard and cares a lot about this community.
Thank you. You know, we're taking it a little bit longer, but I think the thirty-seven years is worth us taking a little bit longer and making sure we afford proper recognition for everything that you've done for the city. I'll open it up for the council members if we want to say any words and I will begin with council member.
How could I say this? The first time that I saw you, um, I think it was a mutual with my brother, one of my brothers, younger brothers. And let me tell you, this guy, uh, not just my, my brother. He didn't call the police, he didn't do anything, he went straight to my house and he talked to me about it. And I never had a person acting like that. And ever since, I've been looking at him all the time and remember that time because when you do something good for somebody. That person will always remember and that's how I remember God. Because I remember that, the act that he did, because he was uh, selfish, he was uh, very um. Patient. Even with the people that he didn't know. And I want to thank you for that. And I want you to know that I remember all these years, every time that I see you, I always remember that time. And I'm proud that you are finally uh, retired, but you're not even retired. And I don't think that you ever uh, um. Uh, try your best, you always did your best. Try me something else. You know, I thank you so much for it, but all your work and uh, all the kindness that you, that you uh, pour into the people that you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Charlie?
Yes, um, yeah, I uh. Glad to see uh, Gama retire in the sense that uh, he's worked really, really hard and um. He's put a lot of effort here in this community. He's uh, been an avid supporter of this community, not only through his work, but all, all, everything he does is volunteer in this community. Doing his kids uh, through college, um. And being a cursiista. Um, you know, recall, um, years and years ago. Um, there was uh, one of the uh, I think it was for the even in Guadalupa. Um, I think the police weren't going to be there, something happened and the police couldn't be there. And so Gama and other volunteers are walking down the street with the uh, blocking off the streets and we had the carrying the. The, the, the signs that we usually block streets off with, we would carry them and go to the next block and put them in front. I remember Gama was leading that charge where everybody's doing this uh, long procession, but we had groups of people that would go. Block off the street, then block off the next street and so on and so forth, and that's, that's one of my memories I have of Gama. Um, and just tons of other memories and seeing him at church all the time, I think that um, being part of the festivals that he always volunteered in. Uh, so many different uh, events that he was always at, always uh, the first one there and, and working hard and so. Uh, I think this community is blessed to have had you. Um, and I think uh, they'll miss you tremendously, so.
Uh, yes, um, I just wanted to say, I, I don't know if Gama remembers me, but years ago, probably ninety-nine, two thousand, I used to work with. Juan Sabida at Solidad Local Development Corporation and um, Gabby Luna as well, um. Um, if anyone here knows Juan, Juan is a jokester, he would buy sweet bread every day. The Tatesito, we would sit down and he would probably take a good hour minimum break and that's just us getting there before we did any work. Um, and I remember there was times when Gama was working, he'd pull up in the white truck, check the meters, the water meters and Juan would always try to lure him in. To, you know, he was at, at, at a council, uh, councilman at the time and he would try to lure him in and. And you know, gossip with him or, or talk about the meeting the night before and I always remember that being real respectful. Um, you know. He would say, you know, hey, you know, do you want a sweetbread, come sit down, you know, have, have some sweetbread, let's talk about this and that. It'd be, oh, I have a lot of work, you know, he would grab the sweetbread and he would go. And that's how I remember just him going, going, going. Um, but always very respectful too, so I know that, that um, um, stood out to me all the time. You know, I think nowadays it's very rare to see men that are men and I think his family knows what I'm talking about, like just um. The contributions that you did for our community from this light show I saw, I'm sure you've saved the, the city, probably thousands of dollars, I think I saw you inside a. A water main hole there and, and those could be so expensive to repair, um. But I think besides the financial, you know, um, money that you have saved the city, your hard work, your dedication, um, with your coworkers and all that, I think just. You know, your commitment as a, as a husband, as a dad. And um, raising your family, I think that's probably one of the biggest contributions that you have done to, to our city, so just want to thank you. Your beautiful wife and your daughter, uh, your son and your other daughter as well, uh, for, for sharing. You know, you with, with our community, so thank you and I wish you and your family the best.
Thank you. Gama, so I, I'm, I'm last, but I just want to say, um, muchas gracias, gracias por todo lo que has hecho por. And um, por la ciudad de Soledad, pero también por la comunidad. So Gama, as you see him and as everybody talks about him, how he is here and how he was as an employee, that's how he is. Out in the public with the community and so. Um, Gama's community service is just, you know, comparable, thank you, thank you so much, Gama, for everything you do, thank you for everything you do in our church. Community as well. Um, and for me, I know, thank you, when I came on board to the city, um, everything related to water, I know you were my to-go Gama. You know, is this legal, Gama, can they do this, can they turn off the water, Gama, what does this mean? And so thank you so much for helping me too, through that whole water process and understanding some of the regulations and also supporting with some of the cases that were really hard and. I know for me, you were my, my go-to, um, to ask you questions, but I think on a personal note, um, thank you so much for. For being a family friend. And that means a lot to our family, so thank you so much, Gama, for being such a blessing to our city, for being such a blessing to. Our faith community and for being such a blessing to my family. Muchas gracias, thank you. And so with that, then uh, if we want to have all of the team come up and if we want to uh, take a picture, Gama, so we can give you this with your family and also with your colleagues. So much, I'm, thank you for your patience as we pause for a bit to honor uh, Gama Romero. Who was retired from the city after thirty-seven years, so uh, it was really nice to be able to have his family here join us. So now we will move on to our next presentation and um, that is our community engagement manager, this is Juan Esoya, who gave us. A brief presentation regarding the city of Solidad, citywide yard sale uh, weekend that was held on September sixteenth and seventeenth. That are also the Tri-Cities disposal recycling special project, uh, project, morning three eleven will be for the details regarding the reuse recycle cleanup day. After our, um, the week after our um, yard sale, which was on September twenty-third, so I'll turn it over to Hesus.
Perfect, thank you, and council, uh, first and foremost, uh, I want to apologize, I had some teeth pulled, so my speed is a little bit different. Um, so hopefully I will in a teeth property, so. Uh, first and foremost, want to give a shout out, uh, special thank you to all the staff that were involved in this, you know, the front office staff. As well as IT, uh, very supportive, not without them. And so this is the official third annual garage sale and it's something that the community really loves, so. Here are uh, a few analytics and for the folks watching on Zoom, you know, this is your first time. Uh, knowing about the yard sale, once a year, one weekend, uh, the city charges no fees to have a yard sale. And we encourage folks to sign up via a portal that IT develops, so that when you sign up, you know, you get a pin drop. Uh, right there for your address, so uh, these analytics are uh, from Facebook only. Um, so, you know, seventeen thousand five hundred thirty-eight impressions, I mean that it popped up that many times, you know, people's social media feed. It reached ten thousand seven hundred fifty-seven people, uh, two thousand six hundred eighty-eight people engaged in and, you know, they. You know, they saw, they hovered over, uh, paid attention to it and then four hundred seven people clicked, so from a marketing perspective. Those are some good numbers. Uh, so uh, here is where we will ask council, right, a little bit more of, you know, for next year, how much more prep do we want to give? Uh, it's definitely something that the community loves, but it kind of self-organizes itself a little bit. So in twenty twenty-one, we have a hundred seven people sign up, twenty twenty-two, last year we had two hundred ninety-two people signed up. And this year, a hundred seventy-six. Um, anybody driving around Solidad that weekend knows that. There are a lot of folks, a lot of folks that didn't sign up and that's okay, they don't have to sign up, uh, but it was, it was a very active weekend. So some of the benefits, um, you know, like we mentioned, um, if you get a pin drop, um, when you sign up. Uh, the more pin drop that the map has, the more it attracts outside folks. Um, and actually, it was successful that, well, it's actually um, had one as well, so. Uh, Solidad was first in, in this area to have one. Uh, we have these signs, um, printed out last year, anybody that signed up, uh, with a form gets one of these signs. Um, for, 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 don't have to pay, um, in a group, it's a sense of community, um, I'm telling you. One of the things that really surprised me this year is that people were asking us about the yard sale like months. Before we were even planning it. Um, it drives, hopefully get traffic multiple pages, so more people are liking our social media pages. Uh, which is good for, you know, other city-related items. Uh, and of course, for the citywide cleanup events. So some lessons learned, you know, we did have a conversation after the event, so to see how we can make it uh, better next year. Start sooner, you know, like I mentioned, folks were calling us before we were uh, initiating the planning stages. Uh, it increased the, the frequency and variety of posts, so we boosted the original flyer and posted a number of reminders. Uh, basically keeping our social media channels fresh, you know, uh, which, like I said, is good for other content as well. And then of course, it increases communication, um, uh, with the team, the front desk team, the social media team, you know, build. Stronger community as well. And then we forgot miscellaneous garage sale, yard sale, the fighter, you know. I think we won't garage sale, but a lot of the community members were calling our yard, so. So yeah, key takeaways, you know, community loves the garage sale, it's a great partnership, Tri-Cities, it inspires other cities and then it helps with up slash recycling. And most importantly, in my opinion, it fosters social cohesion, makes Solidad feel like a community, so. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Okay, so I'll start uh, with questions and I'm just gonna start with councilman Corolejo, do you have any questions or comments, will be questions and comments wrapped up?
Okay, uh, yes, uh, first of all, just wanted to thank you, I actually went, um, and attended or, or went and visited some of the garage sales and I did find some deals. And so it, it went uh, very well. And I think, you know, I just wonder if maybe the September sixteenth date maybe had to do, because I did see that big drop that you showed us on the participants. Um, but you know, again, I just think it was great, I, I, one of the things that I would like to see and, and maybe for next year. Um, it's just, I, I wonder how many, you know, when you were talking about the, uh, what was it? Um, I guess at the benefits of it, I wonder how many people from the outside came in, but I know it's kind of hard to track also, but just curious. Uh, just for myself, like how many people from outside came, that then maybe, you know, it was the hot day, I remember. That they probably went and got, you know, drinks or beverages or, or stayed and had lunch and took a break, then went back out to the yard sale, so I have a feeling that. That was also probably a benefit that we had, you know, people come and visit our community that maybe normally didn't, um. But yeah, I thought it was a, a great event, I loved everything, to be honest, I loved the bright signs that you chose. Um, you know, I think it went well, I did see that Gonzalez is doing it now, so that's kind of exciting, so just, um. That's all I have, but I think I would probably not do it on, on September sixteenth next year. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Chuck?
And I don't think I have any, any real comments, I think it was great, I think there was tons of, of folks that participated, I know there was a lot of folks that didn't. Because I had noticed that last year there was other people that had pulled uh, permits and I didn't see them have their yard sales out and I'm not sure what that reason for, it could have been. Because of the weekend, it could have been for a lot of different reasons, but um. Uh, I just think that the folks really enjoy it, you, in the comments, you see it out there, people talking about it, people getting ready for it and so I think it's great, so let's say, we're gonna keep doing it.
Thank you, councilmember Corleone?
No, I, I did the, driving around, it was beautiful, I didn't stop in any of them. No, I, I did the driving around. It was beautiful. I didn't stop in any of them. But I promise to do so next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
There was a lot of people.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you so much, Jesus. And I actually also want to acknowledge and recognize our former councilwoman, Prilla Stewart, who actually came up with this idea of having a, a, a community-wide yard sale. And I know other communities do it. Spreckles does it. I know they have a major one. And I know because I love garage sales. So I always have gone to garage sales. And there's so many, you know, repurposing of so many things that you can do. And I love to be able, in my spare time before, to be able to repurpose furniture. So, you know, I think it's, you know, all the benefits. It's good for our environment because we really want to make sure that there's a lot that people throw and a lot of good things that people can reuse. So and that for me, the, the benefit of the cohesion and the community connectedness, but also I think just, you know, really promoting our, you know, our environment. And it's really good for our environment. So I just, you know, I want to say thank you because I usually, I, I'm always at garage sales anyway. So this is a great opportunity and it's great for our community to really be engaged in that. And I think when we talked about garage sales in the past, and I know we had increased some of the number of garage sales because we do live in a community where garage sales are very common. And and some people do use it as a mechanism to be able to, you know, even if it's a couple of hundred dollars, that's a couple of hundred dollars. That benefits a family. So benefit economically, benefit for the environment. I think it's really important for us to continue to support these kind of events. So I look forward to, to next year. Yeah, thank you.
I'll just step in and continue to float here. Mayor and council and city manager, hundred, thank you so much for inviting me here this evening. My name is Mauro Treleven, and I'm the Outreach and Education and Project Manager for Tri-Cities Disposal Recycling. So one of the reasons for that date, just to address that comment there, is that you try and coordinate the community-wide garage sales, at least we have for the last three years, coordinate them to fall on the weekend before the cleanup event. And part of why we do that is because we want to make sure that those leftover items, if people go on to all the trouble to clean out their house and get everything ready and it's sitting in their garage, we want to give them the next place for items that they've decided that they no longer want in their home. So that's always been the coordination between these events and our event, which was held this year, the reuse recycle and cleanup day event, which was held on September twenty third. And the reason we held the cleanup event here in Saladad on September twenty third is a coordination that goes back to the spring event that we hold, the same event in the spring. And so we try and space those out as best we can in the community. So there are two wonderful events throughout the year. We do fight the weather a little bit. So in the spring, we try not to have it too early. I actually try not to have it in, in the middle of the summer at all because it gets very hot for our volunteers. And then towards the fall, we're starting, you know, we've got rain next week. So we have the three cities that we serve and we do six events a year, two in each city. So juggling those dates is very challenging. So part of why it happened on September sixteenth and seventeenth is because I had scheduled a year out for the event on the twenty third. The other thing that we run into with scheduling these events is that we, at the cleanup events, require that we have hazardous materials to be at full on site. And coordinating that with Salinas Valley Recycles, they're serving the entire Salinas Valley. So those dates start to, start to book up. In fact, I'm already booked into twenty twenty four. I got those booked, you know, right away because they're the challenger. So there's a lot of coordination that goes on. We're dependent on others. I do want to thank Jesus for coming to the city of Gonzalez and, and meeting, meeting with the team there. He was very, very gracious to share a lot of technical insights that have really made this event very, very successful in the community. When I worked for the city of Gonzalez, we actually did have community-wide garage sales and compared to yours, they sucked. So you really, you really upped, upped the community-wide garage sale there. I was, I was in the laundry rooms pinning up my little posters, you know, little rip tags. So the technology aspect that you have brought to this, to this event speaks to a lot of its success. So as I mentioned, we held the event on September twenty third. I have many people and agencies just to recognize because this is not an event that Tri-Cities puts on by itself. First and foremost, the Saladad High School NJ ROTC volunteers, they are awesome young people. This is not a requirement in our contract, but we realized very early on that there are some older people, people with disabilities. Just it's, it's hard to get rid of a lot of trash, you know. And we realized that having young people come and be helpful to people in their community met their needs for community service. And it also reminded people in the community of Saladad that there are great young people in this community. They're very polite. They're very helpful. They're very strong. So they could really help with some of the heavier items. The purpose of the reuse recycle and cleanup event, the main purpose is to prevent illegal dumping. This is an issue that we have throughout the Salinas Valley and it is very challenging. It's very financially onerous on our communities. And so to have these events where people have an alternative to illegal dumping that involves being able to bring a lot of things at once, we believe is very helpful. We get a lot of good feedback from the public works departments when we hold these events. They say, you know, it allows them time to do the more important parts of their job instead of picking up illegally dumped items either within the city and alleyways or around the boundaries of the city. It is also to help people lighten their load. There are just a lot of things that people, you know, run through their homes all the time. One of the great features of this event, of course, is the, the reuse and recycle part. We have a wonderful reuse area and we see things that still look useful and someone's about to throw them away. And the young people and ourselves, we grab them and we put them in a pile and it's take it or leave it. If it's something that you can find useful, you're more than welcome to do that. And then we also take clothing donations, which we bring to the self or to the goodwill here in Saladad to make sure that the clothing gets there. In the years when we do have a lot of sheets, towels, linens, things like that, I pull those aside and I may launder those at home and then take them to South County Animal Rescue to be used for the animals that they rescue. Also, Salinas Valley Recycles, their, their hazardous material staff, Monterey County Environmental Health with their oil filter exchange. I cannot thank enough Caltrans and Clean California, Caltrans District Five. They, for the last three years, have been providing us a financial grant, which also covers your city's cost for the trash disposal. So the, the city has no expense for this event and has not for the last three years. Their staff also screen all of the loads. They count all of the cars. We've never had the luxury of counting how many participants. So that's been very, very helpful. This year, I know you have your report for the, for the community. We served two hundred and thirty two vehicles at this event. We have been working really hard on the timing of the event as far as how long we stay open. I will let you know, I know some community members would say, boy, we should stay open all day long. It's very tiring work for our volunteers. It's very, a lot of physical labor. And compared to all of the other events throughout the county, all of our events do stay open and provide a tremendous amount of trash capacity. Tri-Cities has allowed me to roll off drivers. So I've got drivers coming and going to the landfill throughout the event and bringing back empty dumpsters. So we really do take in a lot of, a lot of tonnage during that period of time. We, I mentioned two hundred and thirty two vehicles served. What that looks like is forty six vehicles per hour. So those kids are really, really working hard and we're working hard to move people through. And I do always appreciate the public's patience as we do that. This is a very popular event. We collected four hundred and eighty cubic yards of both trash and recyclable and divertible items. That was twenty seven, almost twenty eight tons. The really exciting part about this event is that we reached a landfill diversion rate of fifty nine percent. So that means that almost sixty percent of what we collected that day did not go into the landfill. And I think that that really speaks to being able to train those volunteers and work hard to, you know, get everything into the, into the right dumpster without contamination. I, I hope that your community enjoys this event. We do have other, other options for people to get rid of things. Our bulky item collection service, which is available to residents by appointment. We will collect from your home at curbside up to five items, up to ten times per year. That means every month you can work on cleaning out your garage or, or large items. Again, really working toward preventing illegal dumping. I do want to mention that the holiday mailer will be coming out the first week of November. And that's very important. I like to look everybody in the eye and say, do not recycle that. That is from me to you. And there's really important information in there. Because the winter holidays do fall during the week this year, there will be collection delays. And so it has information about collection delays, Free Christmas Tree Recycling Curbside, and all of the other programs that we're promoting right now. So I, I really appreciate when people actually will open those up. There's really good information in there. If you have any questions about the event or any comments, I'm here to answer those.
Thank you so much, Maury. Thank you for everything that you do. I know it's, you've been doing this for a long time. And thank you for all of that data that, that's reported and all those diversion numbers. And as we're looking at how do we protect our planet and how do we become more environmentally sustainable? I really appreciate everything that's been implemented already through Tri-Cities and through the work that you do. So I will open it up for any comments or questions from the council. And I will start on this side with Councilwoman Corolejo.
Okay. First of all, I just wanted to thank you. I'm always amazed when I hear you, when I hear you speaking and, and you're so passionate about recycling and, you know, food composition and, and whatnot. So just, you know, thank you for, for that, for your patience and always educating. And I, besides thanking you for all your hard work, I just wanted to ask you a question because we are getting close to, um, to Halloween. So I know for, for pumpkins, just asking you because there's probably community members watching. So pumpkins go in the green bin unless they have paint on it?
That's correct. And thank you so much for asking that question, council member. Yes, you can compost your jack-o'-lantern. Make sure that either a carved pumpkin, pumpkin or a non-carved pumpkin does not have paint on it, any kind of candles still in it, or any kind of disco lights on it or anything like that. I know Halloween's gotten really exciting these days. So yeah, just, just the actual pumpkin. Please do put that in your green organics cart. And we are calling that an organics cart now because we can put both food waste and yard waste in those carts. So please do put your pumpkins in there and, and they will be made into compost at the Johnson Canyon landfill.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
Appreciate it. Okay, Councilmember Chaz?
I don't think I have any questions for Maury. I think that she does a wonderful job. And I think they do, I think Tri-Cities does a wonderful job giving information out to our schools. And these two events that happen on a yearly basis are extremely popular. You see lines of folks, you know, dropping off stuff. So I think it's, it's, it's amazing thing that we do with that partnership and with all the dedicated staff, but all the volunteers and partners that you have, that you bring to our community. So thank you, Tri-Cities and all your partners.
Thank you so much. I don't think I can say more than, than as we said, I thank you so much. I, I've been in that event a couple of times tonight. I know from about the volunteers, they're, the work is very, very.
I'm very grateful for that. Well, Maury, thank you. You know that I always thank you anytime I can because you always do so much for our community. But I, I think I just want to also just echo your sentiment in terms of some of the other partners that we have. And obviously, as you said, these things don't happen in isolation. There is, there is other coordination and other partners. And I just want to thank you also for bringing the, bringing in Caltrans in the last couple of years. So I know we didn't have that before, but it was through your, you know, your relationship to your network building to be able to bring in more people, to be able to see what happens in our community and to really give them a limelight at the state level, you know, that there's a need here and that the work that's being done is really critical and important in terms of some of their goals, meeting some of our goals as well. So thank you for including all those other state and local partners as well. And I just want to say for me is thank you so much. The kids at NJ ROTC are students, the cadets are just amazing. I had an opportunity to go and, you know, say hello to them and just to see them in action that day was, was amazing. And I know they do it year after year and through your support also with them and being able to provide them with stipends, right? For some of the work that they do. And, and for me, just thank you. I know you're really passionate about making sure that our community has access to these services. So even the bulky, I just want to shout out in regards to the bulky item because many residents still don't know that that is part of the contract that we have and that is part of a service that they get. So the more that we can raise awareness in terms of, hey, you can, you have a bulky item, you can get rid of it. We do do that as part of the contract with Tri-City. So I just appreciate that. I appreciate the neighborhood. All the neighborhood components that you bring to it. I know you and I usually work on a neighborhood cleanup. And I know that you're really adamant about dates because those need to be on and here in advance because you have everything going on. So I hope to be able to work with you this coming year on doing a neighborhood cleanup. That is really important, especially because those are really focused on our seniors in an area, especially in the older, in the older part of Saladad, where we want to make sure that we're there in the neighborhood and that we're helping the seniors and we're helping those families that otherwise may not have transportation to be able to take their, their, you know, items to the, to, to the citywide cleanup. So thank you so much again for everything you do. And I'm excited that you continue to be a partner.
Well, thank you so much. You all honor me with your wonderful words of praise. Thank you so much. All right.
Good. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, awesome. So now we have our last presentation and that is our contracts. We engineer, Leon Goins will present information, a presentation regarding the pavement management. We looked at your hundred and thirty three page report that was provided. I learned everything about cracks in our pavement.
Mayor, good evening, mayor, council. Hope everyone is doing well, your neighbors, parents, associates. Tonight, we have a presentation regarding the city of Saladad pavement management program update. As many of you may know, a city or public agency's street network is one of its most valuable assets. The city currently maintains about thirty eight miles, several miles of roads and streets valued at approximately a hundred fifty seven billion dollars. A really valuable asset. And tonight's presentation will be given by Mr. Joe Riery with TBI Pavement Engineering Incorporated. Mr. Riery has over twenty three years of experience in developing practical, cost-effective and high-quality pavement solutions for clients in California. He specializes in pavement management systems, pavement rehabilitation design and construction administration. So with that, we turn it over to Mr. Riery.
Thank you, Alex. I think I may all set up here.
There you go.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's great to be with you. We're going to learn about pavement tonight and not just pavement in general, but your pavement. And so let's get started. Our, my goal tonight is to cover a couple of different things. I want to go through some basics in pavement. And then I want to talk about some principles in managing, managing pavement. Go through you the assessment findings that the hundred and whatever page report that was prepared and get into some of the details of that. Talk about your funding needs and then provide some recommendations for the city going forward about their pavements. So let's get into pavement one-on-one. So what is a pavement? A pavement structure is dependent on two different items. One is what it's built on, which are all the upward arrows, and then how much loading it has on top. The worst material it's built on and the heavier the loading, the thicker that section needs to be in order to bridge that material and provide a reliable surface force. Asphalt pavement doesn't deteriorate linearly. It follows this kind of an S-shaped pattern. And we've seen that before. We'll ride on a road and it'll be brand new. And then all of a sudden, many years later, we'll say, gosh, when did this road get so bad? And that's because it looks good for a while and then it falls off. And then it, and then it stays at a slower level if it's not addressed. So asphalt pavement deteriorates two different ways. The first way is, is how it's, the impact of the sun and the water on the pavement, oxidizing it. And the second way is through fatigue. So let's look at each one of these. So when asphalt is made, we take the aggregate and we hold it together with oil. And that oil binds it together and, and, and creates that asphalt or pavement surface that's there. As the sun bakes on it, it begins to lose some of the volatiles. And so it begins to shrink as it loses some of its mass. And as it loses its mass, the cracks begin to form. And as the cracks open, then more water is allowed into there and, and starts to oxidize that pavement and causes it to become more brittle and harder. And then it And causes it to become more brittle and harder. And then it doesn't flex as much anymore. And so it just kind of is this this accelerating cycle, hence the the curve that goes for a while of looking good and then falls off quickly. The second way the pavements deteriorate is is by the impact of vehicles. And not just any vehicles, but the heavier vehicles. And so many years ago, we decided that we needed to really understand this better. At pavement engineering. And what we did is is we took a typical vehicle. At the time, it was a Chevy S ten Blazer. If you can kinda remember what those look like, it was one of the first. Uh, SUVs that was running around and uh, very popular. And so we took a Chevy S ten Blazer and we compared it to different types of of vehicles, heavier vehicles. So a Chevy S ten Blazer or one-two axle truck is equal to four hundred and forty-two Chevy S ten Blazers. On the bottom end of that of the graph that we're looking at. Um, one fully loaded five axle truck that's delivering to your local grocery store. Is equal to almost fifteen thousand Chevy S ten Blazers. And so it's not the busyness of the road from a pavement point of view, it's how much loading it has. I wanna point out that um, a garbage truck is equal to almost ten thousand Chevy S ten Blazers. Um, when we designed many of our streets, we designed it for one garbage truck a trip per week. And now we're running three. And so our pavement life is getting consumed a lot faster, faster than what it was designed for. So that's one of the things that we need to be aware of. So two different ways they deteriorate environmentally and by loading. Um, here's some different kinds of common distresses that you'll be able to see as you're driving around on the pavement. On the left-hand side is a is a distress that we call weathering and rattling. It's where the top part of the pavement, the fines, the the smaller sides that ever gets are beginning to wash away. Either from cars driving on it or just by water flowing over it. The second is is longitudinal and transverse cracking. Where at the weak joints where the paving machines went and recreated the paving joint, there's the pavement shrinks. That's usually one of the first places that begins to crack and and start to form those cracks. And then they also crack trends um, transversely as well. And they start forming into what's called block cracking, which is the third picture over. And you'll see that in pavement. You'll start to see them and they start off being about twenty-five, twenty squares. And then they shrink down to ten by ten and five by five and they get smaller. Uh, the fourth one is alligator cracking. Us engineers were so clever with our naming, right? They just look like, it looks like alligator skin. So we call it alligator cracking. And that's a fatigue type of a stress. That's where the pavement is bending, bending, bending from the cars and the heavier vehicles driving over it. And and it begins to to form this alligator pattern. And that cracking starts from the bottom up. And so if we think it looks really bad on the top. It looks worse on the bottom. If we could flip it over, we would see that. Um, the first three distresses are environmental. The last one is is fatigue. Um, that's important to note because you could build a brand new road and it will never see a a car and it will still deteriorate. Because the first three types of distresses will begin to manifest on that road. Um, and so that's something to note. So when you're driving around tomorrow and and you're looking at roads, now you know what you're looking at. Okay, it'll start talking to you. It talks to me all the time. Okay. So we did a pavement management system update. What's that? What is a pavement management system all about? Well, it's really primarily a budgeting tool. It's allowing you to be able to keep track of your inventory, to know what's kind, what, how, the conditions of your road. And it's a guide to be able to help you be able to select future pavement um, projects. And the pavement management system uses a technique, it's called a pavement condition index. The pavement condition index has been around since World War Two. Was developed initially to to rate our our airport pavements. And it's been adapted and modified and used now most predominantly used way in America that we use to be able to talk about pavements. It's on a scale from one hundred being good, zero being failed. So let's take a moment and just um, talk about the different types of distresses that go into it. There's there's eight different distresses that we we measure. And I wanted to give you some pictures of what the different PCI ranges really mean. So a brand new pavement that's just been paved, no cracks at all, will be a hundred. That's what it would get for its rating. As some of that weathering and rattling begins to happen and some of the fines begin to wash off. Then then the deterioration will be just a little bit less and you'll start seeing the eighty-five in that range. This is still considered a good pavement. Uh, when it starts dropping down uh, further, you're in this picture, you can see the transverse cracking and the and the longitudinal cracking. Uh, that's forming on the pavement. And then in and that's a seventy uh, for a typical pavement. And this is a sixty and you're starting to see alligator cracking beginning to form in the corners. And then we go down further as the alligator cracking begins to grow further and further. The deterioration is is accelerated. This is a fifty-one. So it's used up half of its life. And here's a thirty-eight showing pavement that's cracked on either side and lots of weathering and rattling. And here's twenty-eight. I love this picture because one side of the picture, uh, the road is worse than the other. And it indicates that with the alligator cracking, you're seeing this probably a truck route or something like that that's running on one side of the road. And so the pavement really can't talk to you and tell you what's going on with it. Um, and then this just reminds us why we have pavement in the first place. Okay. Um, let's go over some basic management, uh, pavement management principles. So this is the big takeaway. Pavement management is all about doing the right treatment to the right pavement at the right time and using the right materials. What this means is is that on the deterioration curve, there's different points along the curve. That you want to be able to perform different types of treatments. At the very top of the curve is crack sealing. And then we go to slurry sealing and different types of treatments. Um, and to illustrate the point, oh, the bottom of the curve is reconstruction. And so to illustrate the point of doing the right thing at the right time. If you've got a brand new pavement, you're not gonna go out and reconstruct it. That's doing the wrong thing at the at the wrong time. Conversely, if you've got a pavement that's in really bad condition, crack sealing it isn't the right treatment either. And so you you're trying to manage your resources and doing the right treatment to the right pavement at the right time. So crack sealing, the single most cost-effective thing that you can do to help hold together your streets. Um, it's just filling the cracks. The next thing is that we look at is slurry sealing. Remember, we talked about the environmental distresses that happen. And so you wanna try and protect that pavement from the the um. Oxidizing effects of the sun. And so we put on a slurry seal. It's like putting on sunscreen for us, except you're just doing it on a pavement and we call it a slurry seal and oil and aggregate. Um, more aggressive type of a seal is a chip seal or a tape seal where we put a chip seal down first. So we put a lot of oil down and we put chips over the top of it. So the oil is gonna fill the cracks. And then the chips help us right, not in the middle of the oil, but then the slurry seal goes over the top of that. Helping to kind of smooth the surface and hold the rocks in place. Um, eventually you get to a point where your maintenance treatments aren't gonna hold the pavement together any longer. And so you've got to be more aggressive. And so you start putting down a an overlay and adding structure to the already existing structure. And then at the bottom of the curve is reconstruction, removing that pavement and then replacing it with something new. There are some really cool tricks too. And we, I could spend a whole nother. Um, I time with you talking just about the uh, pulverization and recycling methods that are available with pavements. And and so those are always treatments that we wanna try and look at. So um, pavement management strategies, I've been doing this a long time and I've only ever come up with three different ways to manage your pavement. So you've got a group of pavements and you know what their conditions are now. And and so how do you manage it? Well, the first way you can management is you can do a best first or top-down type of a management. Which means you're gonna take your limited money and you're gonna spend it on all of your good streets in town and keep them in good condition. And what you'll end up with is pavements that you'll have a whole bunch of good pavements and you'll have a whole bunch of bad pavements with nothing in the middle. Not sustainable. The second way you can manage your pavements is by a first or worst-first type of an approach. Or a bottom-up, which means that you take your limited funding and you just look for every single one of the worst streets in town. And then you spend your money there. The problem is, is you will always be spending all of your money on the worst streets in town. Because you're not addressing any of the other needs. And so all of those pavements just keep deteriorating and deteriorating. And you're spending all of your money on the always, always on the worst streets. And so um, in terms of critical point management type of an approach to pavement management. Which is easily described, looking at it graphically. So remember our pavement deterioration curve. And what critical point is, is that you're looking for pavements and and their treatments. When you're trying to catch them right at the point where they're gonna drop into the next needed treatment. So remember, there's different places along that curve where different treatments are done. And so you're looking for that point. And so to illustrate that, we've drawn these dashed horizontal lines. And you're trying to catch those pavements at each one of those red circle spots that are there and catch those pavements there. If they drop down, you're not able to treat them, you might as well let them deteriorate to the next treatment. Because in that range, uh, the all of the treatments are gonna be the same and the cost is gonna be the same. So again, you're trying to to um, maximize the effectiveness of your dollars. And just to show you the some of the dollar ranges, when you're dealing on the upper end of the curve. You're dealing with less than a dollar per square foot, just pennies. And then in the in the more uh, steeper part of the curve, you're dealing with about a dollar fifty-five per square foot. And then when you start dropping down into your overlay sections, you're dealing with five to six dollars per square foot. And then when you're in your reconstruction, you're you're in the twenty-dollar range. So that's why you've gotta try and manage your pavements at all these different points. And and try and be effective with your with your spending. Okay, so let's get into the details of the uh, Solidad. Are you all with me on kind of pavements and the one-on-one? So next time I get to sit, you can teach me? Okay, good. All right. Um, so let's go through this, the assessment, uh, the details. As mentioned by Leon, uh, thirty-eight centerline miles of pavements, over eight million square feet of pavement. Um, your average PCI is a sixty-three. And your replacement value is a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars. Now, that's just the pavement. That's not curb and gutter. That's not sidewalk. That's not signals. That's not striking. That's not any of the other improvements. That's just your pavement. And so I wanted to emphasize that. It's your single largest asset that you have. So how does it break down? Well, we broke it down one way and by looking at the functional classification. So your arterials are your busier streets, your your collectors are your are your next busiest streets. And then your residential are our local streets. Um, this was a really interesting pattern that I noticed and I wanna call it to your attention. You know, sixty-three is your average PCI, but your arterials are at an average of fifty-four. Your collectors are at a fifty-seven and your residential are at a sixty-five. The reason why I thought that that was so interesting is because usually you see that flipped around the other way. There's uh, the usually more emphasis on trying to keep your most used streets in better condition. Uh, and and then usually the residential streets aren't as uh, looked at as as um, such a high priority. So that's one thing to be aware of that stood out to me with your system. Um, this is how it breaks down. If we group it together into ten points. Um, you can see how your curve is kind of right in the middle. And so we've got, there's lots of room to be able to select treatments. And where you've got your uh, the twenty-six, twenty-seven um, um, percent in that seventy to sixty-one range. Those are right, remember we were talking just kind of the pennies per square foot? That's, you've got a whole bunch of pavements that if we can, if we can start addressing them sooner rather than later. Then they won't fall down into the more expensive um, areas. Okay. So we ran some numbers um, using today's um. Most recent bid prices um, for uh, for your system. Just to kinda remember, I told you this is a budgeting system. So it gives you an idea of what your system needs. So let's first of all, uh, look at the left-hand side of the graph. You see that each one of these uh, scenarios starts with the sixty-three. And let's take a look at the green line. And so the green line says you have all the money in the world, no constraints. What does your system really need? And so it's the top end of of that spectrum. What you would need is to spend eighteen million dollars in the first year. And then you would need to spend an average of six point three million dollars over the next uh, years two through five. And you would end up at a seventy-nine. That's what your system is looking to try and achieve. Um, the purple line in the middle is, what would it take to maintain your system? And so if you wanted to stay at a sixty-three, if you're happy with the conditions of the pavement that you see now. Um, two point nine million dollars is what your system needs, needs in order to stay at the sixty-three. If you wanted to improve it by five points over the next five years, you need to spend four point seven million dollars. Your current funding level is at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And so that's the gold line that's that's there. And so projecting forward. Um, if all things stay equal in terms of unit prices and the cost of construction and everything else. You can expect your pavements to deteriorate to a fifty-five in the next uh, five years. Um, I just for the bottom end, if you were to spend nothing. Um, you could expect your system to drop from a sixty-three down to a fifty-two in the next five years. So this kind of gives you an idea of where you're where you're going and and what can happen. And I also would point out that that there's a lot of pressure on that seven hundred and fifty dollar, fifty thousand dollars. It's that, that's pavement. It's it's, you've got striking programs that you just, you need to stay on top of. You've got um, signalization, you've got tree trimming. There's a lot of other pressures that are put on to to that funding that comes from. Uh, the that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So. Um, anyway, it's right now you have a seven seventeen point four deferred maintenance. Um, amount that the system is projecting. At the end of five years, your your deferred maintenance um, will be up to twenty-nine million dollars. So here's a couple of recommendations, things to consider. Um, and this is based on um, not just where the city of Solidad is right now. But also just um, our experience working with other agencies. And I would just point out, you're not alone uh, in terms of where your, the conditions of your pavement are right now. In fact, at a sixty-three, you're doing better than a lot of people. Um, so don't feel, don't, don't feel too bad. Uh, but it will take some, some uh. Attention and intentional effort in order to be able to keep going forward. So the first thing you wanna do is you wanna continue to update your pavement management system. Um, as you can see, it's a tool that will help you be able to understand where your pavements are and what your needs are. And you're gonna be able to monitor and track your effectiveness. Um, developing a multi-year uh, pavement expenditure plan is a huge benefit in being able to manage your pavements. And that's the next step in our work in working with with Public Works. Um, Don and his team is to develop a a multi-year plan of which pavements we need to go, we need to go after. That helps the uh, utility companies know what's coming. And the last thing you wanna do is pave the street and cut it open. And so you need to use coordination and those kind of things. Um, focusing limited funding to preserve critical assets. Um, and so there's been a big, um, you know, as mentioned, you've got your, a lot of your residential streets. That are way better than some of your uh, arterial streets as a whole. So so focusing on your most used. So so focusing on your most used streets, streets are important. Leveraging limited funds with grants. Holy cow, as I sat down with Dawn and and your team here, I thought, wow, you guys are great at getting grants. This is phenomenal and it's really gonna help and will continue to help um supplement the needs of of your city. Um and but as you see, there is a deficit, there's a gap in terms of the funding needs. And of your pavement and um and your ability to be able to cover that. And so um you might want to consider some additional funding sources. And we're recommending looking at uh refuge impact fees, which cities are using, utility impact fees. Um sales tax and partial taxes are all are all items that other agencies have used to. Infuse and money into their system and and be able to improve their pavement conditions. That gets the questions. So I'm I'm open to anything and anything you want to throw at me.
Well, thank you so much for all of that information and um shocking us with those pretty significant numbers. That look like probably our entire operations budget at almost thirty, that thirty million. Um so th- thank you for that. Let me um start with Councilmember Covina if there's any comments or questions.
I have a common slight question. I was, while you were um talking about that different uh deterioration. So I was thinking about the um Gavin, Gavin's tree is becoming like the road or. Or crackers and stuff like that. So do you think that that will uh deteriorate faster now that there is more. Uh heavy trucks uh living that?
Yeah, absolutely. The the way I think of it is, I I think of the pavement being, when you design it, you're. You're putting in so much life into it, based on what you're projecting it's gonna use is gonna be. So it's like a bank account. And when these heavy vehicles go over it, more than anticipated, there's bigger and bigger withdrawals that come up. And so the pavement deteriorates faster, your bank account goes to zero faster.
That's that's uh if I'm not mistaken, that's one of our third year uh streets, right?
Yeah, but yeah, it's it's used more and more by heavier vehicles. You'll see the distresses manifest.
How fast in terms of year, you think that will do?
Oh, that's a great question. Um it's it so much is dependent on on. The materials initially used, if the design was um was done right, if the construction was done right. Um a- and so there's a lot of variables. But when you uh take a road that was designed to hold to. You know, one truck per week and you you um get five trucks per week. It's gonna deteriorate by times action.
It's a whole corridor has different elevations and different inclinations that will um make that deterioration. A little bit faster, I think, yeah.
I love it, you're right. Hundred percent. Yeah, because remember is the environmental effects of water and the loading, both those playing with each other. Yeah, good questions.
That's our chances.
I I have other kind of questions, I think the. Um I know we're short ones and we've got to figure out which way to attack this. And I think that uh thank you for the presentation. I think this information is very helpful to the council. Again, we are talking about our capital projects and we are talking about our roads. Um I know we we. When you look at other roads throughout this chain, the Simmons Valley, we do probably have some of the better ones, but I know that. Um it it is deteriorating and with the change of of our truck route that happened. Um you know, it has changed um some of those streets as well and how they're deteriorating. So thank you very much for your uh analysis and your information.
Thank you.
Um yes, just want to thank you for that comprehensive report. Um I only have uh one question, just kind of uh wanted to get your. Your um expert uh opinion or answer on, you said the breakdown, I guess. Um for us on the functional classification, PCI is kind of opposite of what you usually see. Um why do you think that the residential PCI is higher for us than Solid Ed?
Oh, great question. Um in talking to staff, I found out that that in a couple of years back. There had been a lot of focus with some slurry sealing and some of the seals on your residential street. It's still probably the right thing to do. Again, right treatment to the right pavement at the right time. Um uh and and you have a lot of of newer newer development. And in some of the outlined areas of the city. And so those pavements are in newer and better condition too. So those two are probably the, those two factors are probably the largest contributor to why that is those. That number is higher.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you so much for all of that information. I did drive along and as I was driving around, I was trying to figure out what kind of crack cracking that was in terms of the payments. Um so thank you, thank you for that uh for raising awareness. Um I I I think for me is, you know, I think we have to really look at this. Obviously, we don't have the funding capacity for some of those heavy dollars to be able to to utilize. I did go back and look at our capital improvement program that we um approved last May of uh this May of twenty twenty-three. And I didn't see, I mean, in terms of of some of the upgrades that we were doing to. That were included in the capital improvement program, you know, I see transportation, I'm not sure. I I mean, I looked through it and I didn't see any of some of those streets. Uh besides, I know that we're front street is one of our major streets that we'll be working on and doing a lot of that road work. But I think for me is, you know, as we approve this five-year plan, this next coming budget is really making sure that some of those prior. Prioritize projects or or roads. I mean, I saw your whole list. I mean, there's a bunch of roads in poor condition. And so you're outlining that. I just would like to see more comprehensive in terms of which ones are the priority ones, right? Because we do have a variety of those, especially in some of our older part of towns and even some of our newer ones. Of Monterey and San Al, Dixie, oh, Tiburon Place, Vineyard, Cavernade, Granada. I mean, there's a whole of this. So I think for me is really looking at, I think it's going to be really important for our team to be able to look at which ones are the ones that. Are more of the best, right? To be able to prioritize that. And then include them in the CIP projects that we're gonna approve. And obviously, this can't be done in one or two years, but it has to be a based approach based on the ones that are been up. That are looking at the PCI to deteriorate faster. Um uh and I guess my concern as well, and I know Councilmember Covina brought it up, is. You know, looking at Ultra and Gavilla and and that's, you know, that's one of our newer streets because it's one of our newer developments. But you're already starting to see some of that deterioration because of the heavy trucks. Um that pass through that. And I guess for me, it's just again, I know there was a discussion regarding our truck route. And what's going to be the best way? Because we do have a lot of heavy trucks that come through the city. And to be able to manage manage that and to be able to forecast. You know, which are those streets and do we need to start setting up some funding already to be able to accommodate for what's gonna happen? Before we get to that twenty-six dollar, you know, mark where it's gonna cost us that much to fix. So um thank you for some of the additional funding sources that were provided to us to be able to look at. I think again, when we look at um the mid-year budget um. Is looking at where's those opportunities for additional funding sources, uh because we don't have money. You know, obviously, you probably know this already and see it with a lot of the smaller cities. Um but my other question to the to the staff, I know we have measure installers and other funding sources, but it's not, it's not enough. Um you mentioned the Street Saver program and I know that we have because we've had a presentation before in terms of the the. Um indexing, but we don't have the Street Saver, right? Oh, we do, we do.
That's exactly what we use. It's your program that be updated.
Okay, so it's based on, so we have the program, it's just now we need the money. Okay, well, thank you so much. I think it it, I think for the council, it's gonna be really important to really look at our next um batch of our CIPs. And making sure that those streets are really factored in there, especially the ones that are priority, um because. We do need to start doing something now as opposed to later when it's gonna cost us more money.
Yes. So guys, I wanted to give a few follow-up specific information um about the idiosyncrasies with the solid ad street uh system. And a little history, we did use Street Saver up till about twenty nineteen. And then we converted to another uh program that Tansy didn't like and we really didn't do many projects. So and then the prices went way up with COVID, so we didn't do a project last year. So that's some of the doom and gloom. The good news is Solid Ed uh did receive the Recycled Water Grant. Within that distribution system, all the streets will get repaid with the Recycled Water Grant. Um so that takes a lot of the uh streets out of the Street Saver program for maintenance. Because they're gonna be done with a Recycled Water Grant. So that also applied for and Tansy awarded two point seven million dollars to completely reconstruct West Street. So we can take that out of the Street Saver program. Um unfortunately, we did have to get Front Street into a project note long before the payment required it. Because of the sidewalk condition. We don't have the funding to replace the sidewalk. The sidewalks all heat because of the trees. Businesses can't open their doors, so we had to move Front Street to rehabilitate or do a maintenance project on the pavement. So we can use the funding to also do the sidewalks. And so there's like I said, idiosyncrasies with the payment system, Street Saver is absolutely the way to go. Uh Joe and his team have updated it to real time where we're at. We're gonna do a uh crack seal project next spring, which was his number one recommendation. Then we'll work with Mike and Finance and figure out our measure acts, our SD one. Uh funds available. Hopefully, we can get it up from the seven twenty or seven fifty thousand a year. But um we're kind of in a good shape, I think, with the local streets because there's so many more of them in a high condition. Now we can focus on our arterial streets with the available money to. You know, uh we're not gonna have the two point six million or or whatever it is. But we will spend the funding we have um to get the most paid for the block. In addition to the grant money to do a bunch of streets, I think we're we're gonna continue to have solid ed. Having some of the highest quality streets in them.
Yeah, thank you, Don. Thank you for that. Thank you for giving us some um some good news. After the shock, after the shocker.
And Joe Happy's Street Saver back and updated helping us uh going forward with our payment management project.
Yeah, thank you. And I think for me, I just want to make sure as we move forward, because I know we started this implementation of the CIPs for the next five years. Is that that gets rolled into that, so that way we have a framework and we know what's prioritized. Based on the um Street Saver indexing of the highest PCI um needs that we have.
And Street Saver makes a CIP plan really easy because you take the next five years project out of Street Saver and put it right into CIP.
Yeah, so. Thank you.
So then you come forth on the Street Saver, just to note that. In order to get for the city, it's ordered to receive its share of measure X funds annually, we're required to have and maintain. Street Saver and that's the program that that uh measure X will be like funding for. So either way, we've got it.
Okay, so thank you for that clarity.
Um I'd like to ask a question um from Dawn regarding the.
So we'll ask opening for questions and then we're gonna close it out.
Thank you. Um okay, so um my question was just, I know one of the um streets that I have had um. People from the public ask about was Nestles Road and I don't think I heard that um mentioned. But one of the reasons is that it does look like one of the, what is it, the alligator? Um photos there, but I know there's a lot of heavy trucks that deliver. Um you know, to businesses in the area and then besides, um you know, the delivery trucks, you also have a lot of tow trucks. Um that go out there and then there's the uh storage facility that's also off of, you know, uh that street on those scorchers. So it does get a lot of um heavy truck usage. So I don't know if that's a. You know, a road that we've been kind of looking into or or prioritizing.
So uh that stretch of Nestles also has another idiosyncrasy that there was a truck driving school on that stretch for a while. I don't know if they're.
It's still there, yes, yes.
So that adds to the where it's a turning movements associated with truck driving instruction. So this spring will be doing the crack sealing on that segment. We'll see where it lies as far as priorities within the payment management system. Um and then um it does have trucks. There is a difference between. You look down Highway one-on-one and maybe every ten or twenty vehicles is a truck. The vehicle's coming through Solid Ed, maybe one every hundred or two hundred vehicles is a truck. So we we definitely have track traffic. We do have the three garbage trucks every day, uh twice a, twice a week, I think. So we do have significant truck traffic, but um all things balanced. The ratio is is not as high as like a freeway or other cities that have a lot more trucks than we do. But for Nestles, yeah, uh we do do need to do the crack sealing. And then it is a collector, so it's a local or an arterial. So it will be. Arterials and collectors will be a focus since our locals are pretty high.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for that. So I know we spent a lot of time on the presentations today. It was a lot of new information. So thank you, thank you so much for the report and all the information provided, but we have a lot to think about when we do approve our next budget cycle. Um so thank you. So with that, then um we. So with that, we will move on to our next item on our agenda, which uh is our consent calendar. And today we have um item C dash eight, we see dash, uh sorry, C dash one, we see dash um eight. And I'll ask if there's any members of the public that wish to pull an item um for further um discussion. Okay, see now that I bring it to the council, if there's uh any members of the council that want to pull an item for the consent calendar for discussion are coming.
C eight.
Okay, C eight. Okay, and I would like to pull C five and C six. Okay, council, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve item C dash one, three C dash four and C dash seven. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item C dash one, we see dash four and C dash seven. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, all in favor of the time. All right, any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. And so I uh have a question on C dash five.
Good, any mayor, members, any doubts? Make your questions.
Okay, thank you, Alex. So I just had a question on this item. And so I know that we're purchasing an equipment and there was a couple of items that came up for me again. Um I didn't see this specific item identified on our CIP projects. I don't know if it's something that um came up later. I didn't find it there, but please let me know if I overlooked it. Um but the city of Solid Ed um. I think for me, hold on, just um. One of the questions that comes that I have is, why are we using repair maintenance funds for capital improvement? So typically, I know that that's not, you don't do that. This is a, um that's typically used for maintenance. Um and I just want to know, like historically, how much have we spent annually on repairs and maintenance? Um and then again, my question that was the first one is, why was this not identified on the CIP projects? Um from twenty-three and twenty-four, did we not know that this expenditure was needed? Um a- and I guess for me, just in the future, is it's not identified and it's a CIP project? You know, I would like to know why it's not, is it an urgent item? Is it, you know, what is the need for it now and why wasn't it identified at that time? And why are we using the maintenance fund, the maintenance um funding?
Okay, uh to answer those questions, yes, you've got some valid points. So the um CCTV system or wastewater collection is the cameras we use to go. Explore the wastewater lines, figure out where the broken, clog, things like that. We figured the light would be at least another five years, so they basically broke this year. They weren't planned to break this year um as a capital improvement. We probably wouldn't have replaced them for another five years. But it went down, the the both the computer and the cameras aren't serviced anymore, so we're forced into a position. We want to continue maintaining our uh collection system with uh video, we need to divide the new ones. So you're also absolutely right. We used the wrong account number in the staff report. Mike Howard caught that and explained that, no, that's not a maintenance item, that's a capital. I don't know how the term right, capital asset that we need to use the capital uh budget for. Uh instead of the maintenance budget.
Okay, so on on this one, so because I broke. Okay, so on on this one, so because it broke this year, so it's a five year lifespan for these for.
Probably ten, we hope ten plus.
For the new one.
Right.
Okay.
So we got these donated from uh Carmel Area Wastewater District, the system we have. We've had it probably for ten years, eight to ten years. So um, yeah, we've hoped, hoped to go indefinitely with it, but. It's at the end of its useful service life, so to continue the maintenance of the collection systems like we've been doing, you need to purchase a new one. That was unplanned.
Okay. Oh, got it. And so we have money in the capital fund to be able to do that.
Yes.
Okay. And just for me, I think another thing is when we have identification of different fund, the funding sources, just to put in the amount of funds. That are in that and then just a remaining balance, or at least the funds that we know, hey, this is how much funding is in those. Um, in that specific account um to be able to to understand what funding is available.
We can do that. That fund has a lot of money, so we don't generally advertise it because the next five years will draw it down. So we don't make it look like, oh, we have all this money, but it's programmed to be expended, but we can.
Yeah.
Assure that there's adequate funding.
Yeah, and I think for me, as we move forward to done, because we have the five year CIP. Plan, right? So hopefully some of that capital money is being used in accordance with what's in the CIP plan. So we could say it's this much, but we still have the five projects within the next five years that are gonna be expended.
Right, this balance, but most of it's encumbered with the next five years' project.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And so we have money in there and so, okay, so um. Thank you for that. And then there's, so we're, I'm good with that one. Okay, then my, I go to the next one, which is C dash six. And so this was, this, this is a uh comment, a concern. Cause I noticed that in the report, it talked about that. Um, in the original scope of work, there was a light show feature. And I remember that that conversation because I remember when we approved the lights. There, um, the approval was also with the light. The light show feature and we were gonna be the only city really in in that, at that time, to be able to have that amenity. Not that all the parks were gonna have that amenity and it would bring kind of an added for, you know, future tournaments or whatnot. That we wanted to have out in the fields. Um, but it appears that we never, that the light show feature was never purchased. So I, I guess seeing that we court now, we weren't aware as a council, I don't know, you know, through this process. How we ensure that if there's changes um that can be related to the council on the timely manner of some of those items. That we had approved within those contracts are not um are not purchased. And I don't know who's, I don't wanna say someone at fault, but who was, why was this not purchased? Was it an oversight on the contractor's side? Was it an oversight that we just overlooked? Um, I know that we're gonna have a credit, but I think the, for me at least, I know when we had this discussion several years ago. The light feature was really important to be able to bring something different to our community. So I guess just, you know, changing the funding source, um, I mean, I just, yeah, so I just wanna know like what happened.
Yeah, and please correct me if I'm wrong here, Don, but when we purchased the lights, it was a conversation we had. And it was a, it was a misunderstanding, it was an assumption that we were gonna get these lights with the light feature. And you know, comes to the day where the contractor actually was awarded and started proceeding to install these lights where we kinda all looked at each other. For his electrical feature and I had a conversation with our representative over at Musco. Um, I forgot his name, one again, but I think his name is uh Paul Kirkland, I believe. But you know, I talked to him, asked him, you know, was these light show features purchased? And he told us no. And therefore I followed by asking, well, how much would it cost to, you know, get something like this? And the price number originally was fifty something thousand dollars. It was a very pricey and costly item. I didn't wanna delay the project by any means, so you know, we've talked about discussions and like I said, correct me if I'm wrong, Don. But you know, it was something that we want to go in the future, potentially looking at options of how we can get it and you know. Get a better deal because it seems really high in price, you know, from the Blasantana Ceremony. You spent almost half a million dollars on this project. And by no means am I saying that, you know, it's, it's a cost, I don't know, we shouldn't have been there, but you know, getting the, the, the best deal for something like that.
Yeah, so I guess my only concern, and thank you for extending that, but my only concern is I thought that the money was already approved when we put the contract with. That contract price already included as part of the light feature. So what happened to that money? How did they utilize that money if they didn't buy the light show feature?
I, I have, I think I have the explanation. So when we did this project, we purchased the lights separate. And then we heard a contractor installed it, yes. We asked the contractor as a, uh, when he was bidding, okay, as a bet, bid alternate, how much could do the light show? So he put in his bid five thousand. So as like in car repair, there's parts and labor. The five thousand was just labor. He expected us to buy them like we bought the rest of the lights. So that was the confusion. Most of the time, when the contract were, the contractor provides parts and labor. In this case, we provided the parts, so he was just providing the labor. He quoted this correctly, the labor would be five thousand to install the laser light show. But uh Alex did his best job as he could to get the Musco to bring the cost down. But from fifty thousand, I think he got a significant discount, but it was still considerably more. So we have the option to add it at any time. So it's no more expensive. To add it now or in the future, um, if we put it in the CIP and council decides to go forward with it.
Okay, so my last question on that, thank you for that explanation, but if it was part of the contract that was awarded to him and they did something different. Um, isn't the contractor responsible for what was in the contract for him to do? And he didn't, so why are we not holding the contractor accountable? I know that, you know, now we can do it later, but that wasn't the contract that was approved. I guess that's my question. It wasn't a contract that was approved, so why did, why are we not holding the contractor available, uh, responsible for giving us what we approved?
So the contractor was responsible for installing the laser light show. For five thousand dollars he would install it, but we needed to hand it to him. We didn't actually buy the laser light show, so we misinterpreted his estimate of five thousand to install it and provide it. He was absolutely right. In his estimate, it was labor only. So since we bought the light separately, his estimate was, if we bought the laser light show separately, he would install every five thousand. Since he didn't install it, he did not charge us the five thousand.
Okay, so.
So the total price would be like thirty five thousand, five thousand labor, repairing parts.
Okay, so the contract then that we thought we approved was really not the contract that we thought we approved. Because when it came before us, I remember approving it because I thought this is what we were getting. Um, but obviously, there was a miscommunication or there was a, um. A misunderstanding that we were getting.
Yeah, we represented it, we assumed the five thousand was parts and labor. Um, we made an error. It was part or labor only for the five thousand.
Yeah, so that's, that's really unfortunate. I, I just, you know, I'm just, it's unfortunate, but I think in the future. If that's what happens, then I think it's important for, for the council to know, not when we have a report for. Another lighting project to complete the project, but to be able to at least say, look, there was a misunderstanding, there was an error. We thought that this was what we, what we were gonna get, but we didn't get that as part of the contract. I, I was surprised. I don't know if the other council members, I know council member Chavez, you were here as part of that approval process. Um, whether you, you, you know, you remember that or not, but I think for me, it's just, I, I get it, but it's just, it's unfortunate. And hopefully we just don't misinterpret, you know, in the future, what, what is the. What the contracts are coming forth for us and what we're approving as a council.
Yeah, it was a due to workload, you know, Alex is doing all these amazing projects, his first year here. Myself, Oscar, us, but also we're all involved in the project. It slipped past all of us, so. Uh, yeah, we will strive to not make those kind of errors in future or inform council as soon as we. Find out there's a difference between what we've represented and, and what's actually going.
Yeah, no, thank you, Don. I think for me, I know you guys are doing a lot and I know we have a lot of projects and Alex, thank you for all your work. But it's just, you know, not seeing it on the report. I, I rather have it, this is what happened, we're not gonna get it. But it's not in the final report when we're approving the project.
Thanks for having, you know, the question, so we could explain it, you know, the eleventh hour, but at least now everybody knows what happened.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, and uh through the chair, I just wanted to mention if it, if it's something that you want us to explore. I don't think it's off the table. It just means that we would have to bid for the equipment and we, we could proceed with that as well.
Now it's twenty seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, it won't be cheap, but it probably wouldn't have been cheap if we.
Okay, so then, um, okay, so I'm fine with that. So council member, um, Governor, that's usual, C dash eight.
She does age. I just, I have a question about, um, it's probably me. I used to say it's probably me, but um is this item appropriate for the consent calendar?
Um, we have typically done it as a consent item. Um, but at any time, you can pull a consent item for discussion.
Okay. Hmm. So in this, in this, I don't have enough to discuss anything about the increase, you know, anything, just.
Um, we're, we're available, um, and Mike Howard is here too. Uh, so as um Fran, we're available to answer any questions, we, if you want. Um, Mike or myself could give a brief overview of the item.
Just a quick, yeah, I was a little confused about what we're actually doing with that item.
Yeah, so um we have um four uh directors. Um, in, for the city right now, we um, we have public works director, community and economic development director. We have the police chief and we have the IT director. Um, so those are our four director positions. Um, as you may have recalled, on July first. Um, we actually increased the, the uh salaries for the public works director and the community and economic development director. As a result of a, a comp um study, we, we kind of shifted all of the engineering. Um, positions up, which affected the public works director and the public works director and the community and economic development director were tied together. Um, we didn't adjust the IT director or the chief of police um salary. But both of them, um, their contracts, at some point, we extended their contracts, were, were, were due to renew. So we started conversations regarding uh compensation. Um, looking at parity, internal parity. Um, we're recommending that we raise those two positions, the same percentage that we raised the other two. Um, we also, to make sure that we were in line with the market for those positions. We did a compensation look um and felt that that compensation was in line with. Um, what positions in our area um are getting paid. So we felt like it both was internal parity, um, but also external parity with. Um, the, the surrounding uh communities. So that's, that's how we came up with that percentage.
So just that we didn't include it.
We, we didn't do them, you know, in July first. So we're now um moving forward. It, again, we took the look at these two positions. Because their contracts were very.
Okay.
Um, I have a follow up question. The customer covered it up. You don't have any additional comments? Yeah, um, so just to be clear, then the proposed adjustment is at four point three seven percent for both, right? Um, but they, there was a cola as part of what was adjusted um in July eight of three point five percent. So the total would be seven point eight, seven point eight, seven percent, or is it my total with the both or is it separate? I mean, we're not combining them. I mean, we gave the July cola already.
Yeah, this would be a, a different increase. Yeah, so this would be just the four point um three, three seven. Um, which what I think was trying to explain in the staff report is it's the same as what the bump. Was for the um public works director and community and economic development director. Cause they got that whole thing in July. So we just moved forward with the three point five percent cola for those two positions. So it would just be an add on. It wouldn't be more than the four point eight seven.
Okay, cause they already had, they, we combined them back for the other one.
Yes, yes, exactly. Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then the last class and comp study, cause I know we have done that. And I think what we tried to take a look at the last class and comp study was to make sure that. We had all of the, I thought we had done an assessment of all of the different positions that we had and tried to bring them up to. Where they needed to be, uh, you know, based on some of the other similar comparables. Um, so. That wasn't included in there.
So we actually are planning on doing it, the um, the bargaining units contracts are. Going to be up this coming uh or the upcoming fiscal year, not this fiscal year. So we are gonna be starting um that work. We've already identified um who's going to do that um comp study. And we anticipate, um, you know, having something completed probably around February. In time to schedule those meetings with the other unit. So we do anticipate doing that. Um, citywide, the reason why this kind of moved quicker was because they have their own individual. Contracts versus the other bargaining units that are collective.
Okay, cause the contracts are expiring.
Yes, and in fact, they both graciously, both Stephen um and chief agreed to extend with no. You know, temporarily at, before, as we were having these discussions.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And I know for Stevens, I know there was a, the Paso Robles in Watsonville. So I just wanna say in terms of adding that in there, I don't, I know that we don't have, not all the other cities have, like an IT director, right? That we do, but I don't know if necessarily Paso Robles and Watsonville are comparables that we can utilize. I know that we have other um utilize the school district IT directors. But I know Watsonville obviously is a bigger city with more budget than we have. Paso Robles is a bigger city with a lot more budgeting. So just kind of, um, and the comparables, just trying to find some that are actually more comparable, comparable to, to our cities and our size and our budget.
Yeah, we, I didn't put um exactly in it because there was a, a pretty big range of different IT positions at the. Solid Ed School District, but they range anywhere from, uh, I think about eleven thousand to a high. Fif, you know, close to fifteen thousand. So what would be recommended for Stephen is actually kind of on the lower end of those. Um, Solid Ed School District ones. And of course, even the Paso Robles position is a manager, so it's actually a little bit lower of a school. Uh, skill set than what Stephen has and he would still be making less. Cause we do recognize that Watsonville and Paso Robles are, you know, not quite the, the same. You know, uh, city as us. And so that's why if you look at those two salaries. We still, you know, adjusted it lower given what we have in, in Solid Ed. But yes, I, I agree, they're, they're a different community. Um, so we kind of balanced it by looking at the school district. Ones and felt that this one was, was in range.
Okay, and then just my last question on that one. So I know we're all dealing with unfunded liabilities and all this stuff that's coming, especially um. Some of the recent um numbers at the state level, but salaries and staff are, they're tied to those unfunded liabilities. Question.
You mean in terms of the CalPERS?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, yes, I, I mean, in terms of that, I wouldn't say unfunded liabilities. Maybe um if, if uh Mike or Fran wanted to correct me on it, but it's more about what they would get. Compensation wise when they retire.
Yeah, so for the unfunded liability, that's actually extremely complicated. Um, so. Because the, the state does have a mandate that they will have a guaranteed rate of return of seven percent on the state CalPERS funds. When they fall short of that guaranteed seven percent rate of return, it then falls back onto the backs of the jurisdictions. And so there is somewhat of a delay. I, I would say it's like about a two year delay. Because by the time we finish this fiscal year, the actuarial report will take two years before it comes out. And then they adjust our rates. So when unfunded liability started, it started uh back in two thousand or. Two thousand sixteen or fifteen, when pension reform came into place. And so there was a huge bell curve where the rates were going um every single year. We're actually at the top of that bell curve and ours are starting to come down slightly. Um, because most of that has been funded. They tried to get it funded early and then it's starting to come down. But there is, you mentioned that the, some of the grim re, the, the state announced that it received less than what it was expecting to. So we will see an adjustment in a future actuarial report. But for now, we, we budget with what the information that we have, um, the, in fact, there was a presentation in the budget. Uh, presentation of where it looks like it's going to, where it's where we're headed right now. So we'll see what happens.
So we'll see with the next budget cycle, what that looks like.
Well, correct, because I mean, keep in mind that the employer rate is trying to maintain the system. We're trying to, the unfunded portion is trying to make up that delta between the, the guaranteed rate of return.
Yeah, thank you. I won't, I won't pretend to understand. So. Yeah, so, so with that, then, um, I will entertain a motion to provide a C dash five, C dash six and C dash eight.
Second motion.
Okay, so you, first emotion.
Oh, you, oh.
So if you want to make a motion, second. Okay, okay, so we have a motion on the floor, um. Yeah, in a second, so all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, so motion carries, so we'll move on. Thank, thank you so much to the staff. We'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is our public hearing number one. Um, and this is for ordinance number sixty twelve, ordinance of the city council, the city of Solidad, accepting a close out report. On the city of Solidad, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, state community development block grant award twenty. CBG CB one zero zero five eight and grant award twenty CDBG CB two dash three zero zero one one nine. Business assistance loan programs and operating submitted to the California Department of Housing and Community Development.
And, um, Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. No, I just wanted to let you know that this, um, was, um, shown on the agendas and ordinance. It's actually a resolution, so we apologize for that.
So resolution, so we didn't say resolution number sixty sixteen twelve. Okay, probably, okay, thank you. So what I'll do is I'll open up the public hearing. Well, we see the staff report, I will open up the public hearing for comments. And then I'll close the public hearing and then we'll take council action on it. So, um, I do see, uh, will I turn it over to Tensia Marcus, our economic and development housing coordinator?
Yep.
Okay, I know that she's joining us online. Tensia, can you hear us?
Yes, hi, good evening, everybody, um, mayor and council. I'm sorry, I'm not there. I'm currently in training this week, so, um, that's why I'm joining via Zoom. Um, I'm here to, to present a public hearing on the close out report for the city CDBG grants, uh, cares grants. Twenty CDBG CB one, CB two and CB three, um, that were submitted. Um, so, and so we can submit to the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, a little bit of background on these grants. Uh, during the pandemic, many of our small businesses were forced to shut down and were left with limited revenue and limited resources. In order to assist our local businesses, um, business community, our council, um. Recommended that we go ahead and apply for funding for the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, uh, grant fund. Fiscal year funding, uh, year. And, um, when we did, we applied for both and we were awarded a total of four hundred and seventy thousand, a hundred and forty one. Dollars through these two grants. Both grants have allowed the city to provide funding for businesses, um, that were affected and struggling during the pandemic. Um, whether it be by shutting their doors, um, with limited revenue and limited resources. Um, the loans, the loans were issued specifically, uh, designed to. Fund three loan activities, which is acquisition of machinery and equipment, inventory, um. Merchandise and also working capital for our local business owners. Um, the very first grant that we did receive was, uh, number twenty CDBG CB one zero 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 twenty fifty eight. That grant, um, was able to assist two recipients. And, um, just a second. And we were able to lend out a total of seventy thousand dollars. And the rest of the funding was used to fund fourteen thousand one nineteen was allocated for general administration. And seventeen two hundred and twenty eight dollars allocated towards activity delivery of the grant itself. Um. Um, and then a total of two businesses again were assisted. And that was Solidad Nails and Grooms by Jen. The second grant that was received was, um, a total of three hundred. Sorry, I'm having a problem looking at my screens.
Three twenty.
I'm sorry.
You got it. It was three twenty eight fifty one?
It's three sixty eight, yeah, three, actually three sixty eight. So, um, that grant, we were able to assist quite a few, uh, businesses. The very first one was positivity clean, um, and that was an existing business, um, that we did, uh, help with the first one. But she went ahead and requested additional funding to be able to. Of, uh, be able to provide additional type of services that normally are not available within the city limits, which is, um. She is a dog groomer, a pet groomer, so she was able to provide like shampoos for fleas and medicine, which is normally you would have to go to. Either a vet or to outside of the city limit. So that was able to, uh, keep that type of business in, um, within the city limits. It also helped to create one full time position. The second business was a brand new business, Stitch Em Up Embroidery, which is a completely different type of industry. That was not available within our city limits. Um, they were funded seventy thousand dollars and that business created two full time jobs. The third business that was assisted was Sandy's Hair and Nail Salon. That was an existing business and, um, they borrowed fifty thousand dollars and it allowed them to keep one full time position. Another business that was assisted was True Use Auto and Diesel Repair. That is a brand new business, although it's an existing business that used to be in town. It's in the old Solidad Tire, uh, facility. That was vacant, uh, for a little bit of a while, couple of months. But they, uh, went ahead and continued that type of business, but they're new business owners. They were lent out ninety five thousand five hundred and thirty two, um, dollars. And this also created one full time job. The Windmill Restaurant was approved for a loan in the amount of twenty thousand seven hundred and forty two dollars and fifty seven cents. Um, that is an existing business and it allowed him, um, to be able to keep one full time job. So this grant, a total of two hundred and sixty five dollars, five hundred and thirty two of the funds. Were used and allocated for business loans. Forty seven thousand nine hundred and forty three dollars were you for general administration. And fifty five three hundred and nineteen dollars were allocated for the actual activity delivery of the grant. Um, both grants have been a great asset to the city and to the business community. Um, as it allowed the opportunity for these businesses affected to be able to retain and create new jobs. Um, accepting this close that report and it's a middle, um, is required. Um, we, we will be going ahead and submitting that once this is done and complete. Um, there is no financial impact to the city as all of the activities that were funded through this program. Were funded through the actual grant. Um, at this time, the, what we're asking is for the council to adopt the resolution, accepting the close out report. That we will be submitting to CDBG. Um, at this time, the, as, as I mentioned, it is required. Um, the other alternative is that you not adopt the resolution, um, and then give us other type of direction. Um, but then this is not recommended because they can affect the close out of both grants. Um, this does not require any CEQA, uh, compliance. Um. And, um, it would just, we just need, um, your approval to submit the, uh, report to, uh, CDBG.
Thank you, thank you, Tensia, for that detailed report. So at this time, what I'm going to do is let me open it up. I'm going to open up the public hearing, um, see if there's any comments from our public. So I will open up this public hearing, um, public hearing number one. And so I will take it up to the public, those of, those that are joining us in our chamber. There's none, so I will take it up to those that are joining us via Zoom for any comments on this report on public hearing number one. So, okay, seeing none, then I will bring it back, then I will. Public hearing at eight fifty eight and I will, um, bring it back to the council for action.
Um, I, I just like to make one comment. Thank you, Tensia, for, uh, uh, into our consultant that truly assisted all these, uh, small businesses here in town. I'd like to go ahead and, uh, I think we have to have this second public hearing. Is that what we need to do? Or? Just resolution, nothing, okay. Perfect, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to. Uh, accept, uh, I guess it's resolution sixty twelve, uh, and move that forward to be able to close out this, uh, the reports that are necessary for these, uh, grants that we received.
Second. Okay, so there's a first and a second on the motion, um, so all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. Um, thank you, Tensia, and before we just close out on this one, I also want to say thank you so much for all the work that you've done. Thank you for all of the work to assist our businesses, especially this was very critical during the time of the pandemic. And so being able to support our businesses, being able to have staff that really went after these grants that were available was really important for our small businesses. So thank you for all of your work, um, on this as well. And I hope you have a good training.
Oh, it's, it's good. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this time, then we will move on to our next public hearing. And this is public hearing number two, uh, SB two implementation actions continued from phase two. Ordinance number seven fifty four, ordinance of the city council receiving Solidad amending chapter seventeen point thirty eight, special standards and requirements. Um, title seventeen zoning of Solidad municipal code by adding section seventeen point thirty eight point three nine zero, special standards and requirement for single room. Facilities, so at this time, we will receive the staff report, open up the public hearing and then close the public hearing and bring it back for council action. So I will, um, turn this over to, uh, Adriana, um, our. My assistant. Associate, associate, associate planner, associate planner, thank you.
Yeah, associate planner, thank you. Um, good afternoon, council mayor, um, I'll be presenting, um, the, uh, phase two. The last ordinance that was continued from our previous council meeting, uh, report. Uh, regarding single room occupancy facilities, um, this will ultimately amend our special standards and requirements. Chapter, uh, seventeen point thirty eight on our title seventeen zoning of Solidad municipal code. Uh, just for brief background, during our twenty eighteen housing element, um, the city of Solidad was required to comply with a variety of housing types. And single room occupancy, uh, facilities, um, is included within that, um, specific, um, item we have to comply with. So just, um, to for definition, single room occupancy units are very small. Um, living units that provide a valuable source of affordable housing for individuals. Uh, on the October fourth city council meeting, um, there was, uh, a concern for the minimum stay for thirty days. And unfortunately, staff also understood that during that meeting, um, and having a maximum stay of thirty days. Um, therefore, council was not, uh, did not approve and decided to continue this item to the October eighteen meeting. Um, in order to clarify the length of stay for single, uh, single room occupancy units. Um, after reviewing the ordinance and, um, looking back, it was proposed that occupancy shall be limited to a minimum of thirty days. Um, meaning that the SRO cannot be rented less than thirty days, but can rent indefinitely. Um, as there is no maximum length of stays for those facilities. Um, regarding, um, CEQA, council approved regular, uh, resolution fifty ninety five, certifying that. To the general plan, EIR for the proposed amendments. Um, no significant impacts were identified for this amendment. Um, therefore, it is recommended that the city council waive reading, adopt and read by title only ordinance number seven fifty four with no further change. Um, if you have any questions, clarify.
Okay, thank you, um, through the chair. I just wanted to clarify, I didn't, I, I think, Mike, after we. Um, profit, we posted the, this ordinance had a media suggestion on word change.
Um, I did. I, I, because I read it and have the same problem I think everybody else read it. It's just worded strangely, it is, uh, limited. I think the word limited makes it more confusing. And so I, my suggestion that would, would be that we change the language to occupancy shall be for a minimum of at least thirty days. I think that's easier to understand. That's what we're doing is we're setting that basic protocol with at least thirty days per se. The limited thing just makes it sound as if that would be the maximum we'd be able to say. So that would be my, be my only suggestion.
Could you repeat, repeat that, sweetie?
Sure, uh, occupancies shall be for a minimum of at least thirty days.
Take off the limited.
Yeah, take out the limit.
Yeah, that makes, that makes it more clear.
I mean, if three or four of us all had the same initial reaction with, oh, this is wrong, you know, then I think that. We want to make sure that folks in the future would be able to interpret this without any kind of problems.
Okay, so th- thank you for that, um, verification. So at this point, then I will open up, uh, public hearing number two and I will open it. Um, so there is no one in our chamber, so I will not take it out to our chamber. Um, but if there's any, uh, we do have, uh, those that are joining us via Zoom. Is there any public comments on, um, on public hearing number two? Okay, seeing none, then I will close the public. Four, and I will bring it back, um, to council for action on this item. And so I make a motion to approve SB, uh, oh, wait, we're gonna just read by title only?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure, so when this item appeared at the previous meeting, was it being produced or was it continued?
It's continued.
Right, so it's only here today for introduction. Yeah. Waiver reading and not adoption.
It was introduced on August sixteenth.
That's right.
And then a second meeting was continued, so I think it's the public hearing, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to, for the, for the last changes.
Got it, got it.
So it's two way, so the recommendation on the report is way reading. Okay.
Through the chair, I'm sorry. Are we allowed to make any comments?
Or, yeah, so I, I already, I opened it up to the public, I came back, I closed it. Um, we were having, I mean, if you have a question and I think you just want to make sure that we're flowing and that we're asking questions at the time that it's supposed to. Yeah, okay, so, um, okay, so let me bring it back. So there was the correction made in terms of what's going to be, uh, deleted. And then, okay, then any council comments and then we'll do our comments now and we won't come back for another round. This is the first round, so if you have comments or questions, just make sure we ask them at this time. So councilwoman Cora Leno?
Thank you. Um, yes, I have been dealing with that, we decided to leave for, for a bit, so I apologize about that. Um, but I think one of the things that I had, um, mentioned the last, um, meeting we had when, when. This was brought up was that I really wanted to, um, see, and I, and I don't know if there's something that would go along with. The hearing portion of today or more with the housing element, as I had just got to mention before, but I know for me. The a hundred fifty square feet for the SROs are, you know, they're pretty small. And so what I was thinking or, or was hoping is that we could have something, um, to where we are providing wraparound services. More specific, like housing, to help people to get into, you know, um, more spacious housing. I think during COVID, um, when a lot of us were, were stuck at home, you know, because we couldn't go to work or school. I think we saw how it affected people physically, how it affected them mentally to be in close, uh, you know, quarters. And so I can't imagine this reminded me of when I was in, in college and was in my dorm. And I'm pretty sure my dorm was larger than a hundred fifty square feet. You know, I'm excited to see us, you know, moving. You know, moving forward with this. I think it's also some different types of housing are needed. But at the same time, I wanna make sure that we're providing. You know, our our community with with different options and to keep supporting them any way we can as the as the council so that they can keep. Improving or or, you know, give them options. And I think that for me, that's real important to make sure that we're. Providing them with the services, whether they're, you know, I don't know, emotional, mental, trainees or or housing. Services. I just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you. So I just, so for for the purpose of this, the SRO has a specific definition, and it's. We're not gonna change the definition under the zoning and what the SRO is because it's a specific type of unit. I think on the other elements that you're talking about, that's probably more in line with other resources under. The housing element, but I don't think it's specific to this. This zoning, right?
Yeah, through the chair will take that direction because we're in the process of revising. The housing element and it will come back. To council to vote on, so you can further amend it, but we will take what you're saying. Good timing because we're working on that now.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so for the purpose of this, then, Councilmember Chavez, do you have any comments or questions?
No, just thanks Ariana for the clarification. I think that was the little hole there.
That's my.
Just a little comment that consider that I think that a hundred fifty S R living space. Because it is also have a two hundred fifty square feet of common area. And I remember my my studio when I was at the San Jose State was a lot less than a hundred fifty squared. Yes, consider for future.
Okay, so thank you. And I know there's a lot of different types of type of units. This is specifically for a SRO. A SRO has a specific definitions and specific requirements. So. So given that, then there we will waive the reading about when we. Okay.
That that would be the motion that you want.
Okay, so if I can, if I can get a motion to waive the reading and. By title only.
I make a motion to waive the reading.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Thank you, Adriana. Thank you for all the work that you've been doing on these. Okay, so we'll move on to our business items. And so we have four of those today. So. Business item number one is B two implementation action, the phase three. This is ordinance seven fifty seven and seven fifty nine of the city council, the city of solid municipal code has seventeen zoning, chapter seventeen point forty one inclusionary housing and chapter seventeen. But fourteen R dash three high density multifamily district and seventeen point thirty industrial districts to streamline housing production and comply with various state law updates. So I will turn it back over to.
Yes, hi. This is SB two implementation for phase three, which is the final phase for this SB two grant. I've mentioned we got, I was, we received a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to. Make needed amendments to our municipal code regarding zoning in order to facilitate and streamline housing production in solid and and comply with state regulations. Tonight, we're presenting ordinance number seven fifty seven and seven fifty nine. Ordinance number seven fifty seven is regarding inclusionary heart housing ordinance. So this specific ordinance is involving the concurrent development of inclusionary housing units. And in. During the beginning stages of this ordinance, our consultant from Placworth. Mentioned that of. Development of units should be concurrent without any flexibility on timing. As we move forward. With this review of the ordinance and a lot to do with also Megan's experience in housing, we looked into. Maybe recommending that. We provide concurrent development and be flexible when developers collaborate with affordable housing. Developing agencies. Due to the con- causing constraint to multifamily development if timing is not the same with a market rate developer. So. We have, it may have had unintended consequences of procuring the construction of multifamily rental housing projects by affordable housing developers. Most households with lower incomes depend on rental housing, and it is something we really need here in solid act. So we wanna make sure we try to. Minimize those constraints to multifamily housing units and allow market rate developers to collaborate with. Affordable housing developers and not have a constraint to their timelines. Due to securing tax credits, which is very important for those affordable housing developers. So the proposed text is that the required inclusionary ownership units or units in a multifamily rental housing project. Shall be constructed concurrently with market rate units. City council may approve alternative timing detailed in an affordable housing agreement for multifamily units. Unit rental housing projects when an affordable housing developer is involved. So one thing to know is that affordable housing agreements do have to come into council. We do have an affordable IHA committee that gets to review these agreements. And be formally approved by the city council. Therefore, city council has that flexibility to. Alternate the timing and secure that the. Affordable developer agency is also. Is involved with them to comply, is part of the compliance process. Again, city council will have authority to approve the timing and place conditions within that affordable housing agreement. So that change is being proposed in ordinance number seven fifty seven. Any additional?
Through the chair, I just wanted to. Ariana might have not been in the loop with our smart city attorney who had some alternate language, which is in the packet. For that, which would read, the required inclusionary. Shall be. Constructed concurrently with market rate units. And this is the new tax. City council may approve alternate time timing for a multifamily. Unit rental housing project when an affordable housing developer is involved through an affordable housing agreement.
Okay. Thank you, Megan, for that certification. Okay.
And then for ordinance number seven fifty nine, this is relating to new uses and a density regarding the RP district, which is our multifamily. The zoning district and our industrial district. For the RP district, amendments include adding multifamily dwellings, second residential units, transitional supporting houses as permitted uses. Where they were before either under conditional uses, which would allow them to go through the planning commission process and. Take more time when approving a housing project. So by going to a permitted use, we have an administrative review in order for them to apply their. Their development project. Typically, you're reducing about three to six months review when you're giving a permitted use and not going through a conditional use process. In addition, the density is also being changed where before the minimum. Well, now the minimum of twelve units per acre in, that's the set minimum, and the maximum is twenty two units per acre. Before, it went from sixteen units to acre to twenty two unit units per acre. With a CUP. So you can get a CUP for twenty two units before, where the maximum was only sixteen. Now we're giving that as a maximum by right. They don't have to go through a conditional use permit to acquire those twenty two units per acre. So increasing density. So that's part of the RP process. And at last, for the industrial district, this ordinance was introduced or. Introduced to planning commission. And one of the main concerns was having employee housing as a permitted use in an industrial district. And it came to our attention as research with a consultant and HCD representative. That it is permitted due to having agricultural uses in the industrial district. Therefore, we have to comply with the California Health and Safety Code seventeen zero two one point six. That requires jurisdictions to allow employee housing in zoning districts that allow agricultural uses even in industrial zones. Currently, the M and the BP districts in our industrial dis- zone allow several agricultural uses. Some as conditionally permitted and some by right. In order to. Providing solution to the planning commission's concern regarding health and safety and location. Staff is proposing as a conditional use permit for employee housing and changing all agricultural uses as a conditional use. That way, we have a little more discretionary review where agricultural facilities are located in respect to employee housing as well. So that is what is being proposed tonight for industrial district on ordinance number seven fifty nine. And at last, I've mentioned, these amendments were approved through Resolution. Fifty nine eighty five to certify an addendum to the general plot, general plan EIR in terms of SEQA. No significant impacts were identified for these amendments. Of course, when projects come into fruition, SEQA analysis will be identified once these codes are adopted individual. Once the projects come in, we analyze them individually. And if you have any questions, feel free to, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, thank, thank you, Ariana, for that. So let me, let me start. With, well, let me take it out to the public person and I'm gonna go to the council to make sure. There's any members of the public that are here with us and chambers, if there's any questions on item B dash one. Okay, see none, then I'll take it out to those that are joining us via Zoom. If there's any questions, I will be dash one. Okay, see none, then I will bring it back to the council for comments and questions at this time, so that we can, we can take both at the same time, so we don't have to come back again. So I will start with Councilmember.
Thank you, but I'm not, I don't have any questions, just then.
I just have one question. Which properties fall, or at this point, fall under the use that have ag use and are in the industrial districts? Or how many properties is that?
The industrial district would represent the area on Nestles and Los Coches Road. Most of the land is vacant. As you can see, no, no, no development is proposed right now in our books, but that entire area would go from. The end of H W S Street, even where the Sequoia property is, which is the big lot there. All the way down to Works Los Coches and behind the shopping center, the solid marketplace.
So those could be utilized for ag use as well as industrial?
Yes.
So, okay, so then the last property, the one that the city owns, that kind of triangle, that'd be a boat, because we have a well that's there on the. Yeah, okay, just just curious.
Don't have any questions, thank you. Thank you, Ariana. So just for clarification, though, for that industrial use, then we, they can use that. For agriculture use, for eight, for housing, employee housing?
Yeah.
Okay, so my my next question on that is I know the city of King did, and I don't, maybe they are not in compliance anymore because I know we have to be in compliance with some of the state laws, but. I know they looked at kind of the zoning and identified, these are the recommended locations where we wanna see. If we're, you know, obviously, if we wanna prove H two A, but it comes through the CUP process. That there's already locations that have been identified to be that, is that something that we can do? I know that's something that they did where they looked at the city, and I mean, I don't know if it's still valid. I know they did it several years ago, but they did have. You know, kind of identification of where they wanted to see their employee housing be constructed. So that way, it's not.
I don't know how, through the through the chair, I I don't know how Mike feels about it, but I think it's from a planning perspective, highly problematic because there's a lot of. When you're looking at a conditional use permit, there's so many things that are unique to each project that you really have to consider. It would be hard to preordain, I would think, any particular project without knowing exactly. The specifics, whether it be water use, circulation. So to me. That would be problematic from a planning perspective. I don't know what Mike would say.
Yeah, I think that would be a difficult task. I mean, since employee housing now is allowed, first reading every zoning of the city, trying to identify specific areas that we would prefer or something. I mean, we might be able to do something where we said, do you have preferred use? But at the end of the day, no one would have that follows, couldn't be compelled to.
Yeah, because I think it's only recommended.
Right.
Yeah, so can we, I would like to take a look at what they have and if it's still valid, but how they did it, like in terms of. The recommended, and I know they work closely with their agriculture companies to be able to work together, right? So it's not just anywhere but.
And are you talking about just the industrial zoning designation or an all zoning designations?
And then industrial zoning designations. Okay, so those are just the comments I have. So at this time, then we will, I need a motion to. That I need a motion to introduce and we by title only ordinance number seven.
Did we take it out to the?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we do. So I need a motion to introduce and we by title only ordinance number seven fifty seven and seven fifty nine.
I make a motion to. Read by title only or.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Thank you so much, Ariana. For that. So we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is B dash two, receive report on Senate Bill three twenty nine containing. Councilmember compensation and provide direction to staff, and I will turn this over to Megan.
Yeah, and with the, with the chair, I don't know if it's too late to do this in the agenda, but. I know we have these two kind of later items, and since staff is here, I don't know if it's possible to take items B three and B four ahead of B two.
Yes, so council, do we don't, do we need a motion for that? Or we just agree that? Okay, so as a chair, I would like to then defer item B dash two until the end and. Bring up item B dash three and B dash four. So B dash three, I'll turn it over to Don and to Alex.
Thank you, Mayor. So fortunately, we had to bring. Repair agenda items to council for the repair of well number six. So the city has five municipal drinking water wells. Our path is such that on our hottest winter day, we can operate the city very adequately on our, on four wells with our best well out of service. So the maintenance schedule for wells is every year, we take one well out of service during the winter to pull it out and. Check it out and make repairs. We're just about to do that with well eleven, council authorized that expenditure, I think, last meeting, when well seven went out. So we're kind of holding off on pulling well eleven because seven went out. It was a motor, apparently a motor that hurt now. It was under warranty. We got it replaced. Just yesterday, thinking, okay, we'll be back with that one. So this well six, I'm gonna talk about, was okay. But that didn't fix it. There's something wrong below ground with well seven. So well seven is still down, and then over the last month, well six has been acting up. We would start it and it wouldn't stop or we'd stop it, it wouldn't restart for a couple hours. Kept getting worse till now it won't restart at all. So we pulled it out and there's significant damage to the bearings, seals, what we call spires that keep it in the middle of well. And the pump's okay. It looks like some sort of. Manganese or something got in the bearings that's made it seize out. So in order to put well six back together, during about seventy, there's seventy two thousand dollar repairs needed, which is about our, our authority. So. That's why we're here, council tonight, to go forward to that one. We do have two choices. Once we get six back in operation as well as seven, we'd like to continue with well eleven, but we're gonna use the money that we put into CIP for a well this year. On well six and seven. So if we don't do well eleven, that'll put us behind a year. Basically, these wells, some of our workhorses run twenty four seven through sixty five, so five years is a good life. To rebuild it. We do go to each well site every day to do above ground maintenance. We also check the chlorine, check for vibration, things like that, but. There's only so much we can tell until they start going out with one six hundred people over. Which is where the well pumps are. It's a dry cap going all the way down. Which is where the well pumps are, it's a dry cap going all the way down, uh all sorts of things below ground. Um if the wells crooked, they can go out more than every five years. Um just various things. We've had good luck with wells ten and eleven, they probably haven't been out in eight years. Six, seven and nine seems like we're coming to you every couple years with something going on. It's part of operating the water system, the wells work hard, you know, um and we do use better quality materials and equipment, but still, uh it's average every few years of all good we can. Well, that's what we have. We have two wells down. That's why we brought this matter tonight is to get it fixed and back in service as soon as possible, because we have three wells down, which we did in twenty thirteen have that happen, have to do a reverse nine eleven um message to everybody to conserve water, so we can keep our tanks full and have fire going. Uh that's not the case yet, but the urgency to get well six back in service is, is there because seven still isn't fixed. And if we had another one go down, that would be bad again. So staff recommendation is to repair well six. Give it to city manager to see if well six and seven are back, see if we want to amend the budget and do well as well, but that'll be a future agenda.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Don. So let me um take it up to the public first, um and then I'll bring it back to the council if there's any questions on that. So any members of the public that are joining us here in the chambers have any questions in regards to item B dash three?
I have.
So.
I'm not doing, does need well, need maintenance continually, especially those that are being active.
So they need uh maintenance. We check them daily. Sometimes they need the lube line adjusted, we check the chlorine daily, we check for vibration, things like that. So they're checking on and we had chlorine and minor maintenance daily. They're pretty uh reliable, so they don't ne- necessarily have issues daily we have to repair. Also annually, we check, um we have a performance check, another con, consultant come in and check to see how many amps are drawing, how much water the town's using, to see if they're declining or if they're watching as they should. So we do visit the sites daily, uh but every five years we need to pull them out for a break and, and do an inspection.
Yeah, thank you, Don, um for that. So let me take it out to those that are joining us via Zoom if there's any comments or questions um on item B dash two, three. Okay, see none, then I'll bring it back to the council and I will um just if anyone has at this point, if there's any comments or questions, if you guys want to just go ahead and ask. Okay.
Through the chair, I just wanted to note that because we're invoking the emergency provisions in the code um that this, this particular resolution requires a forfeits majority. Um and it also establishes an ongoing reporting requirement. So by invoking the emergency provisions in the code, we're dispensing the bidding process that we would normally have to go through for this type of work and that is necessary to fix the well. So um I just wanted to bring that to your attention and mention the super majority requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, staff recommends, I'm sorry, to uh go forward with the emergency procurement. If we wait and advertise this project in a paper, put it out for bids for two weeks, you know, that's going to extend that time till we can get it back together. And we do have a driller ready to put it back together um in the next week or so if we do it now. We push it out a month, we don't know how busy they're going to be. So staff recommends go for it as soon as possible.
Yeah, thank you, Don. So that was my question in terms of timeline for the fix. So if we approve it tonight, then within a week, it'll be back up in operations?
The uh the driller has everything but one part. I'm not sure which part it is. He thought he could have it a couple days. He's got the rig ready, so hopefully within the next week.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. And then every five years, just to clarify, there is the maintenance um.
Where we pull it all out, all six hundred feet of what's below ground out and look it over, inspect it. Typically, we replace the pump with a few parts and then move it back together.
Okay, well, thank you. I just, you know, learning about water is interesting, because I know that we, not every city has their own system that we operate. So I know Solid Ed is very special, because we do, right? So but that comes also with cost and maintenance and making sure that we take care of our municipal water system, so.
Yeah, Solid Ed's the only between Solus and King City city that operates every aspect of their water system.
Yeah, no, yeah. Okay, so um with that, then I will entertain a motion to approve item um B dash three.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to authorize the emergency repair work to one of the stakes.
It's second. So we have a motion on the floor, all in favor say aye. Aye, can you oppose? Okay, so motion carries, you know, honestly.
So that was for approval of resolution six here on three, correct?
Yeah. Okay, so we will move on now to our next item, which is um the um business item B dash four, resolution number six sixty fourteen. Uh resolution is the council of the city of Solid Ed approving an emergency contract change order for construction services with Anderson Pacific Engineering and amount of fifty four thousand nine eighty five for the Dixie Street Suburban Water Replacement Improvement Project and authorizing the city manager to execute a change order on behalf of the city of Solid Ed, so I will turn it over to Alex.
Of course, thank you everyone. I'm sorry for bringing this to, you know, last minute here, and nobody is an emergency contract change order. So essentially what had happened is, you know, when exposing the, the, the street here, you know, we uncovered that, you know, some segments had less than the two and a half of grinding capacity and exposed, you know, the base rock underneath. So there's two major components to this. One is the emergency side of it and the engineering side of it. So I'll briefly touch them on. Both side of the engineering, you know, we essentially discussed it to what the solution is going to be. It's a one inch H M A leveling cord, essentially applied a thin layer to have a surface so applied this fabric, which was originally part of the contract. And if we don't have that, the merit asphalt fabric doesn't do with shop, and you see all the cracks and things reflect through the pavement. And as Joe was previously mentioning, at the point to have, we're spending so much money on your streets, it's, you want them to look the best, of course. Uh but that being said, the emergency side of this is, if we don't get this approved tonight, you know, we'd be looking towards the next council meeting, that's two weeks prolonged into the future. That being said, we'll have this really torn up street. I'm not sure if you guys have driven near Dixie Street, but it's in, you know, you know, shape. And then with that being said, you know, that poses a problem as we uh saw throughout the week, there's a little bit of confusion with Solid Ed residents traversing around the areas, right? You don't really have a detour thing uh leading you where you need to go. So it's blocked off, it honestly costs, it, it expands from Mets all the way down to Front Street, and you have emergency vehicles such as police, fire department, you know, paramedics, if they didn't traverse, they, they can do it, but you know, it'll come at a toll to the vehicle going through these sections. And of course, you know, that applies to the residents as well. So with all that being said, this is why we bring this, you know, emergency contact media order to your attention.
Thank you, Alex, for that, um for that report. So let me take it out to the public first, and then I'll bring it back for council if there's any questions on this item. So any members of the public that are in our dice that um have any questions or comments? Okay, see none, then I'll take it over to our, those that are joining us via Zoom. Any questions or comments? Okay, see none, then I'll bring it back to the council um for any questions or comments on this item. And thank you again, this is invokes the emergency.
This is, no, this one's different, because we're not dispensing with bidding, we're just processing the change order.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We're not doing that. Okay, so I, I, I have a couple of questions, but let me take it out to um if the council has any comments or questions.
I'm not.
Okay, I, I just have um, and, and this is just the comment. I know obviously we need to approve it, because it's emergency and we want to make sure we take care of it. But I'm just a little concerned of the amount of contract change orders in this specific project. I know it's a big big project, infrastructure project, but having done some work with the city of Salinas and some of our C I Ps, I mean, I know that we want to make sure that we're really tight on the, the contract change orders. This specific one has, is approved tonight. I don't have six contract change orders over six hundred and twenty-six thousand. A little bit over um between all of those, and the original contract price is one thousand one hundred and one million, right? One million, one million point one. Um so I just, I guess it's just my concern if for future is looking at these projects. I know there's some things that aren't anticipated that we can't see, but just whether there was an underestimation on the design piece when it went out to bid um to not, you know, to not understand the magnitude of the project, but just concerned with the total level and increased change orders. And if there's a mechanism that, that staff can kind of do, I don't know if we're overseeing it or we have a management contract who's overseeing it, but where there's just kind of more vigilance in terms of the contract change orders.
Of course, we do have, uh you know, construction managing team, we have to recontract it out, Wallace Group that does oversee everything and they filter it out. Uh they catch everything and then send it to us, went in the final, I say, for reviewing these things. Um so yeah, there is some sort of structure there that, you know, goes with all these changes, and we not blindly accepting what the contractor presents to us. But as part of the original design, I can't speak too much about it, wasn't here during that time.
Yeah, and who's our, who's overseeing the contract? Who's overseeing the contract?
Construction.
The construction contract.
Wallace Group. Wallace Group.
Okay, it's not Harris?
No, we're rotating projects around. Wallace have C M available, Harris didn't.
Okay, got it. Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay, council, um so there is a need to approve resolution number sixty fourteen. Do you want to have a motion?
True, I think that they um have a number of targets when the charges have not expressed their question or comments.
Oh, I thought there was none.
Yeah, we didn't have anything.
You didn't have any?
Yeah.
I thought, I thought uh.
Yeah, all the information was on, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the.
Yeah, I thought, uh, yeah, okay.
Thank you. Okay, so can we have a motion to approve resolution number sixty fourteen? I make a motion to approve resolution number sixty fourteen.
So.
Okay, so is a first and a second, council member Governor, all in favor say aye. Aye, can you oppose? Okay, so motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so now we come back to. The B two.
Chair, thank, thank you for making that change for staff's sake.
Yes, now I know it's been a long night already, so we will move on to um receive report on Senate Bill um number three twenty-nine concerning council member compensation and provide direction to staff, and I'll turn this over to our city.
Um, you know, we had a request to bring back some information to the council on Senate Bill number eight twenty-nine. Um and you have a full staff report as well as the text of the new legislation in, uh in the staff report. But basically, the state law regulates the maximum compensation for council members and when those adjustments can become effective. Um the legislature's been lagging a little bit, the compensation schedule for general lawsuits like Solid Ed has not been adjusted by the legislature since nineteen eighty-four. And so on June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, Governor Newsom approved Senate Bill number three twenty-nine that increases the maximum amount of council member salary that may be approved by an ordinance passed by the city council. And in adopting the uh new legislation, the author of the bill uh said that the increases were authorized, uh were designed to address recent inflation, inflationary increases in economic realities. And it's hard to believe that you could track that in our forty-year period. Um enable city council members to balance their careers and personal obligations with the calling to serve the community and to provide incentive for members in marginalized communities to provide public service to a city. All these grass and earth for uh salary increases is going to make it more economically feasible for the city of Solid Ed to uh have residents run for city council seats and may assist with council member recruitment and retention. The current salary for Solid Ed city council members was established, believe it or not, in two thousand, last established in two thousand and twelve. And at that time, it was actually reduced by a hundred dollars due to the economic situation. So the current salary for the mayor is five hundred and fifty-one dollar per month, or seven thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars annually. For council members, it's four hundred and fifty-one dollars per month, or six thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars annually. Under, now if the council is interested in uh visiting or implementing some of the new provisions of the uh, the bill, the council's choices are as follows. They can apply the new maximum salary established by S B three twenty-nine for cities with a population of thirty-five thousand dollars or less, which in this case is nine hundred and fifty dollars per month, or eleven thousand four hundred dollars annually. The mayor would be, uh, the mayor's salary would be one thousand fifty dollars per month, or twelve thousand six hundred dollars annually. By both statute and uh code provision of the Solid Ed municipal code, the mayor is entitled to a hundred dollars extra per month over the regular council member compensation. The council could also choose to increase the salary of council members to an amount that's below the maximum. That's it within the code, so there's no requirement that you take the maximum nine hundred and fifty, you could increase it from what you currently have to something in between this and the nine hundred and fifty dollar uh maximum, or take no action to increase salaries. Council also has the ability to adopt an ordinance that would increase council's uh compensation beyond the specified maximums subject to formulas that are provided in the government code. Um one of them wouldn't make uh any sense, that the, the increase would not be uh significant at all. The other one, it would be a five percent annual increase for every year since the last salary adjustment. And since the last salary adjustment in two thousand and twelve, it was made in Solid Ed, it would bring you above what the uh maximum salary is for uh in the code. So right now it's at nine hundred and fifty dollars per month. I think that I talked to Mike uh last week and we sort of did a quick calculation and made a determination that it would be around between ten fifty to eleven hundred dollars per month, if we use that other formula. And then finally, and lastly, the council has the option of placing a measure before the voter, exactly, to establish the salaries of the council and the mayor. You can put it before the vote, you can see the population base maximums that are established in the code, so you can put out the voting sheet for an amount of compensation in excess of the nine hundred and fifty dollars per month. So at this point, staff is just seeking direction from the council on what they would like to uh have brought back for their consideration, if anything. As a final, I just wanted to make you aware that notwithstanding the language of the new bill, pursuant to government code section three, six, five, one, six, twenty-five, any change to the salary that was approved by way of the ordinance would not come into effect until a new council member uh received it or the confirmation of the new term of an existing council member in two thousand and twenty-four.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mike, for that report. Let me take it out to the public first, if there's any questions. So um any questions on I M B dash two from those that are joining us here? Okay, so I will take it out to the, those that are joining us via Zoom. Okay, see none, then I'll bring it back um to discussion and I'll um turn it over to Councilmember Governor, I know he's the one that brought this item forward, so Councilmember Governor, I will start with you.
Yeah, going back to what Mike said, so the, I mean, that if we approve anything, it will be starting in twenty-four.
Um because it would be either in two thousand twenty-four, between now and two thousand twenty-four, there is a new council member seated. Uh then, then the, if you had already enacted or approved a new uh compensation rate, that compensation rate would take place.
I, I thought I, I saw somewhere around that, I mean, you know, the start third days after the ordinance, you know, the effective thirty days after the adoption.
But because of this other uh overlay of this other government code section, it only becomes effective uh when, when persons who are newly elected are seated. There was a way of uh the government making sure that multiple changes aren't made in compensation over a short period of time.
Okay.
I'm still a little confused, but but uh, yeah, that's, that's all.
So I, I think the, for the lot, population base, but if we want to increase, increase anything beyond what is being allowed under S B three twenty-nine in terms of the population numbers, and we would have to take it out to the voters, right?
No, you could, you could do the, the five percent interest every year since the last adjustment, which was in two thousand and twelve. Um so yeah, the, the population based uh figures are sort of the, uh we're supposed to be meant as a handy sort of shorthand way of sort of saying like, okay, here's the standard that's been set, and that we can use this one easily if we want to adopt that. The others require a little bit more work in terms of the calculation and convincing the, the voters that you have a reason to provide compensation yourself in excess of the uh, the amounts that were set in the statute. And then you also have the ability to, just like I said, send it out to the voters.
Any additional questions, comments that you have?
No, no, no.
Okay, Councilmember Chalice?
Uh, you know, I, I, I saw the, the report, I looked at.
Uh, you know, I, I, I saw the, the report, I looked at it. Um, you know, I know that back in two thousand twelve, when, uh, the council decided to lower. Uh, the amount, uh, for the council, um, you know, it was done because. Um, in two thousand ten, uh, the city was in the red over two million dollars, so. Um, they couldn't even, uh, they were fairly able, the city was fairly able to pay for, um, the employees that we had as a city. Um, and I think that, uh, during that time, I don't think we've had an increase because I don't think any of us have looked at. Um, this as a, as a salary, but rather as a volunteer, um, position, even though we get some compensation for it, so. I was surprised when, uh, this happened at the state that we're looking at compensation, um, statewide or something like this, but. It, it is what it is.
Okay, council member.
Unless I, I think most, well, I'm pretty sure all of us sitting up here see this as, as council member. Um, Travis said, as a, as a volunteer, that's how I definitely see it. I think we all have a passion for our community. And a love for it, and that's why we, uh, sit here. And I do see it like a, like a volunteer, um, uh, position for myself. And I know, um, the, the reason that this was passed and I did kind of question it just because of the inflation and so many people struggling since COVID. We have so many families, um, struggling right now. Um, but I, I, I do understand that, uh, the governor did it to, you know, to help out with recruitment and also with, um. Equity, um, but I think for me, I personally would like to see it maybe deferred for another time. I don't feel that this is the best time. Um, I think for me, I'd rather be giving our, our amazing staff raises instead of, um, you know, and the raises are. Three percent, seven point something percent, I think we saw the, the last time, um. That's where I would like to see our, our raises and not so much, you know, at least I speak for myself, um, for the council.
Thank you, uh, so I'll address this because I know this has been discussed at the mayor's meeting, um, for the last couple of, of. Council meet, the last couple of meetings that we've had, especially, um, with the, the passage of the bill and looking at. You know, some of the cities, I know a lot of the mayors have looked at this and saying, hey, this is something that. Uh, for some of the cities, I know they're moving forward with implementing and moving forward with. Bringing it back to the councils to see if this is something where the councils want to move forward. I have to say, I don't think I, for me, it's, it's not anything having to do with our staff. I think our staff does a great job and I think there was a mechanism for them to get raises. I think for me, obviously, we know that we don't do it as a volunteer, we don't do it because of the money, because the money is not. Not, you know, it, it's minimal, um, but, but I also understand that for me is looking, looking at. Who we want to continue to support being in this council seat. Before it was people that were retired and had the time, now it's not people that are retired and have the time, it's people. Like many of us that are working and I have to, for me at least, I'll say. I have to take time off from my work when I'm doing any related functions to the city. So, um, although it's not a big salaries compensation, I think for me, if we really are serious about inclusivity. And bringing more diversity and really bringing more younger people to the table to really be in service. Um, it's not the notion whether we do it because we volunteer, because we love it or not, it's the fact that there's younger. A younger generation that I want to be able to also support that. Um, have children and sometimes it's paying for that childcare. Um, sometimes it's single mothers, not everybody or a single father, right, for that case. Um, where this money, um, it, it's not, it's not even enough, but I think, um, being in public service now. And sitting in this seat for the last several years. I think it's really important to be able to look at it, not as a mechanism to be able to say, hey, while we, we do it as a volunteer basis or it's. You know, we rather give the salaries to our, our staff, we have a mechanism to do that, I think for me, it's really allowing for more participation. Attracting more younger, um, individuals, being more inclusive. Looking at not just the retirement folks, but really looking at working families, that if we really want more participation and engagement. There has to be an incentive and incentive for some of us is, you know, we care for our community, obviously we do it, but I think financially. We also have to be realistic that in this time and age, some of our families are really, um, hurting. In terms of finances and if they want to serve in public service and they have to take time off for work. They have to pay for childcare, um, I think it's important to be able to look at, for me, I'm, I'm. I think it's important to be able to take a look at this and, um, I would, I would want to look at. What's proposed based on the population, based on the population for that recruitment, to be able to. Allow more people, um, to bring in a diverse group. That, um, wants to be here, but sometimes that's their financial impacts and if we can support. Support, um, our community members to get more engaged and to be here, but also to be able to alleviate some of that financial burden that comes with. Being a council member, having to take time off, I think it's really important to be able to look at it. Um, through that lens, for me, I think it's important to have this discussion. Um, and to be able to, uh, move, move forward with really having, uh, an open mind in terms of considering this. Um, for future, uh, approval. So it's a discussion item.
Yeah, and for me, I, I, I understand that outside of as well, I just, um, seen an eighty one percent increase, um. Just seems, um, extraordinary for me, um, I, I get. That we want inclusivity, yeah, I, I get that part of it, um, I, I just, I guess I'd see it through a different lens of just trying to serve. And, um, I, I just see it differently, I guess.
Yeah, and I, um, can we clarify eighty one percent increase because I know for us, we deferred it, we actually decreased it, but. If we're looking at parity and what we actually had besides the twenty twelve decrease. Then it's not an eighty one percent increase, right? Because if you're looking at, based on the population, it would be nine fifty per month. Um, and what is what used to, before we decreased it, um, voluntarily.
Oh, we want to have that number.
So I don't think it's an eighty one percent increase, I think the number's lower than that, so I think, I just want to be clear of that. Even though in twenty twelve, whenever it was that we decided to take a decrease, it was.
Six hundred and twelve for the mayor and five hundred and twelve, uh, for the council.
And that was the.
That was in two thousand and twelve, prior to the one hundred dollar a month reduction.
So right now with that reduction, then it's five twelve and four twelve?
It's, uh, it's five fifty one per month right now. And four fifty one, so five fifty one for the mayor, four fifty one for the council.
Okay. It would probably be a fifty percent increase. Not eighty, but I think it's an eighty percent increase, but.
That's the number you have right now, so that's.
Yeah.
Well, through the chair, I, I'm, uh. I'll be okay with, uh, without increase, it's not, it's not, it's not a matter of whether I am or not. But it's, it's interesting to me that we discussed, um, a raise of up to fifteen thousand dollars a month. For certain individuals, but we get all spooked by, by hundred dollars sometimes. Yeah, and it's, it's incredible that you can see somebody how much they struggle. Out there, but not right here. So how do you know that I'm not somebody who's struggling? Uh, if they, i- i- is that, I don't care, or what, what do you mean?
No, I didn't do that, uh, what I did is I, I understand what you're saying, my thing is that. This position that we run for is, you know what the compensation is with. And when you're going as an employee, you're working full time, and we're not here full time, so that's, I think, I think that's how I differentiate it. And so that's why when I say it's a volunteer position, so I'm not trying to negate. What you may be going through or what anybody else may be going through, that, that, all of us go through things, we all have rough patches, we all have ups and downs in our lives. Um, uh, we become employed at times, it's happened to, I think, every single one of us at, at one point or another in our lives, so I'm, I'm not negating that. For me, I just, the way I perceive the position, I see it as a volunteer position, that's, that's all.
And so I want to make it, make sure that it's not something personal because I requested that.
No, definitely not, but no, that has nothing to do with you, I think for me, as a, as the state has put this forth. I think it fits for certain communities that want to do this, that's my opinion, it's just my opinion, the way I see it, but. Not because of you.
Yeah, so thank, thank you for that, so I, I just, for me, I'm just gonna clarify again. Um, it's not a volunteer position, it's a position that we get elected to. Um, and it's a position that I want to make sure our, our community understands as well, because I think it's been. Especially being in the realm with many elected officials in the last several years, um, i- i- it, it is something that. Elected officials are talking about it because there is a lot that we have to do. And it's not just sitting in this dais twice a month. That is what we are elected to do, it's all the committee meetings that we have to attend, it's all the events that we have to attend, so to say it's. A volunteer position, I think we, for me, for me, um, you know, i- it's a position that's really important to the benefit of our community. And if we really think that our community is critical and important as well, and the people that sit here are also critical and important. And I want to make sure that, you know, as we're looking at bringing in more people, um. That want to be here, yet there's challenges in terms of financial childcare barriers. That we have an opportunity to say, um, here's an opportunity for us to give to other, other younger generations. To be able to say, or even someone that's elderly, that may be on fixed income with social security, but wants to serve and doesn't have. The money because this is all they get and they still have to pay their rent, that. Um, I think it's an opportunity for us to be able to look at it through a different lens, um, and not so much as a volunteer. Uh, because none of us are volunteering for this, I mean, this is time out of our family, this is time away from, from our loved ones. This is time away from other things that we do and yes, I get it that, um, it's something we choose to do. But I also think it's an opportunity that if we're looking in the future and wanting to attract more quality. Individuals that, it's an opportunity to, nobody's going to be rich off of this, so this is one of the things that nobody, it's not like we're going to get rich off of this. Type in that we get as part of our city council, but for me, I think it's really important to be able to look at. The younger generation that is struggling with childcare, that is struggling with payment, that is struggling with food and security. That is struggling with, um, making ends meet, that they also need to have a seat at the table. And if we want them to have a seat at the table, then we have an opportunity with this bill to be able to say, hey, here's a little bit more compensation. Because we really want to make sure that your voice is heard and that you can also be part of, of this, because not everybody has a luxury to say this is a volunteer position.
And, and through the chair, I, I, I hope that you're not trying to, you know, to move my words around. I, 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 again, I said it as, this is my way that I view it, and it's not maybe the way you view it. You have a different lens, everybody has a different lens, we all have, uh, different ways of the way we look at the world, um. My mom would always talk about. And so I think that's part of who we are, we all see the, the, the differences and, and it's okay. I think that we all look at things differently and that's, that's all right, there's no issue with that, uh, for me, again. The way I see it is just such a huge increase that we're talking about, we're talking about eighty percent increase. Um, you know, when we do something like that, I mean, I just, I don't, for me, I, I can't see it, but you know, maybe for others, that, that's fine.
Thank, um, for me, through, through the chair, um, I honestly love the discussion that we're having. We, we do again, all see things differently because we all have different backgrounds and different things that we're, um, dealing with, I. I do want to say, you know, again, going back to, we all see things differently, I, I do see it, um, you know, like. Uh, uh, volunteer and the fact that you really have to love what you do to be up here and expose yourself, you know. Um, to that and put the time, like you said, to go to the events and. And even the prep time, just to prep for meetings, we'll get a packet, it'll be like a hundred something pages and not just for one, for one item. Um, but you know, I, I, I do also, um, you know, I, I understand. Um, because I try to keep an open mind about things when you brought up, um, Mayor, um, Velazquez about, uh, children, uh. You know, parents with children who need daycare, not just single parents, any parents, I think we all, all, all of us here have children and have been there. You bring up a, a real good point. Um, and I, I think one of the things that Councilmember Lada brought up when she was here, she had little ones, I think she was the only one that had little ones. So it was kind of nice when I got to, you know, go, uh, to events with her and I kind of got to, you know, help draw with the children and, and, and see that. Um, I think for me, I, I, even if we do increments, maybe two increments, um. When it comes to the pay, I'm definitely open to that, I, I would love to see, you know, young, uh, young parents. Parents with, with young ones here to get that, um, perspective, I think we're definitely, um, missing that and it's been a long time for me. Since mine were, uh, were little, so, um, that's just, you know, my, um, I guess my two cents on this, um, you know, I, I. Do definitely want to see, um, um, that mixture, I think the more the mix that we have on the council, the better it is because hopefully we represent. Everyone that's out there in the community.
Yeah, and, and through the chair, just really quickly, I'm not against, say, a five percent increase, I'm not against. Maybe considering, you know, a seven percent increase, kind of what some of the staff have gotten, uh, but. The big one, just one big jump for me, that's, that's the one I have an issue with, so, uh, maybe there could be a way that the city. Uh, council makes a decision that we do a five percent increase or a seven percent increase and the next year does it again or whatever. But, and, and I'm okay with something like that, because I think then that it makes it fair for folks that do serve, then in the future, there will be a bigger compensations. Or more compensation, that makes it a little easier for them to serve.
Yeah, thank you for that, and I just want to clarify eighty one percent, because I don't, I want to make sure that that's, whether that's accurate or not. Um, based on the numbers, but thank you for clarifying your position on it and, um, I think for me, I just want to be clear that. For me, it's not tied to, when we talk about the salary of staff, I just want to make sure that we're clear and we're not, um, the, the. The community isn't confused about, oh my goodness, they want to give themselves an eighty percent increase and the staff only gets a seven percent or four percent. That's two separate animals, because our seller, our staff gets our salary and being a staff. And, and we know in our jobs, whether we have a contract or not, the salary for the, our, our employees. Is on an annual basis that we come here on the budget and we approve salary increases or not to them, so. So that's important for us to take care of and not that we're deferring it and not that we're going to be excessively. Um, approving something that is not adequate or, or equi- equitable, so I just want to make sure that our community doesn't be. Oh my goodness, this is what they're doing. For us, we haven't ever talked about it since I came on board and, you know. I, I didn't even look at my numbers because I thought it was actually a little bit more and so, you know, I didn't even see my check because. It doesn't even come to us, it, you know, but, um. I, I think it's important to be able to kind of differentiate that. It's not about our staff, it's not about our, our employees and giving ourselves a raise. Um, and then giving them something less than that, I mean, theirs is an annual thing that comes before us and we approve. This is something that hasn't come before us and we've never had the opportunity. And so for me, again, is looking at this and I'm open to increments, if we can come back and look at what can we agree with. That we can move forward in terms of increments, but I think for me, having seen that. Um, there's a lot of a younger generation that is struggling a lot more and doesn't have some of the, um. Um, maybe some of the, you know, whatever it is, financial stability that some of us may or may not have. Um, and wanting to be more inclusive and attract other people that are qualified, but have some financial, um, challenges. That I think it'll be important to be able to. Offer that to attract a different, um, inclusivity, um, to be more inclusive. So, that is my lens and that's, um, if we can bring it back then, if we're in agreement to be able to bring it back for some type of increment that we can all approve. Um, we can all agree on to be able to say, maybe it's in phases and here's how we're going to do that. Would that be feasible, Mike, or do you?
Um, so what would you like staff to bring back, I mean, uh, uh, in order to, uh, effectuate any change we have to bring in ordinance? And I, I have to have the specifics, so should we just agenda this maybe for a discussion at the front part of a meeting when. Everybody's, uh, not as exhausted as we probably all are right now, and we've got a bit more of a discussion in terms of. Uh, what percentages will look like and maybe run some numbers and we could run some numbers like five percent or ten percent or.
Yeah, but we can have like a different table that has, here's a percentage base and here's what it would do, here's what the total changes would be.
Come up with a table that we can look at and then once we have that direction, then we can put it into an ordinance and bring it forward.
The chair, are we able to also bring like other cities, like maybe Green, Volcan, Salas comparable cities, that's kind of where they're at, maybe?
Yeah, we can get that information, but everybody's got a different history, I would imagine, right? In terms of kind of different learning and when the last year was made and so forth.
Some of them didn't have our history, where we actually decreased our pay, I don't know if that's what the predicament is with all the other cities, so that'll be different, but. I don't know, I know some of the cities are moving forward with moving this to the, um, to their respective jurisdictions for approval, I know City of Salinas. Yeah, they were doing it and so kind of looking at that, but I think it would be good if we see what some of the other compensations are currently, that would be good. Yeah, they were doing it. And so kind of looking at that, but I think it would be good if we see what some of the other compensations are currently. That would be good.
Would, would it be okay for us to look at five percent as one of the, the turkeys? We, I can, I'll just do, I'll ask Mike to do a five, a ten, a fifteen, a twenty and we can take a look at this, how that would work.
Yeah, and I think for me, I just don't, for me, I don't wanna go beyond, I mean, I don't want to go beyond the caps that already are under R S V, um, under the ordinance. So I mean, so whatever it gives us, but not really exceed.
Those are your benchmarks. Okay, so that, that makes it easier for us to put something together, bring back to them.
Okay. Okay, Council, good discussion. So, um, we will move on now to council reports. And I apologize, but my, um, Steven, my computer shut down. I ran out of, um, I don't know, it wasn't charging, so.
Yeah, I I noticed that the charging.
Let's handle this.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we'll go into, um, city reports. So, um, I'll start with my reports on, um, ten eleven. On October, that was a guest speaker for Partners for Peace as part of their Solid Ed Mentoring Program. I was able to speak to twenty six students about the mayor role. Uh, thank you, Megan, for also speaking to them about the city manager role. We had, um, students that were participating in the brief mock council meeting. Um, and they were really excited to be able to sit in these seats and kind of, you know, pick the mic and just, um, uh, it was, it was pretty exciting to see. So, thank you so much to Partners for Peace for all the work that they're doing as part of the violence prevention with the city. And then on the October the twelfth, I participated on the Blossom Park Lightning Ceremony. So thank you to the staff for coordinating all of that. Thank you, Jessica, from Recreation for, um, making sure that was an incredible day for the, for the Santa Ana family and also for our street, our our soccer scrimmage that happened. Um, on the sixteenth of October, I participated in the ag mitigation and conservation policy stakeholder meeting um, with the mayors and the city managers and LAFCO and Monterey County staff and the agriculture commission, commissioner staff, again, uh, around ag mitigation, um, and county continues to move forward with um, their, um, ag mitigation uh, ordinance and looking at, at the county, through the county for the incorporated areas. But they were interested in also looking at what the cities are gonna do and moving forward and hopefully in alignment with um, the ag mitigation component. And I know one of the comments from the LAFCO staff, um, Kate McKenna was, um, the LAFCO board isn't going to approve, um, isn't going, I mean, that we're gonna continue to have information in terms of the ag mitigation, but it's really allowing the cities, um, the four south county cities and, um, to be able to look at what is feasible for for us, right, Megan? We think in that way. It was a long discussion. And then on the sixteenth, I did participate in South County Mayor's, um, meeting with Supervisor Lopez. Uh, we did have a presentation from Nick Pasculi who updated, um, the, the updated us on four major county campaigns that are happening. So if you see that um, happening or moving forward, they are focusing on messaging with regards to respiratory illness with R R S V. So um, just, you know, precautionary for our residents, making sure that we're taking care of ourselves and what to do, what not to do. Um, they're also having a campaigns for the election department. So for voting in the presidential elections. Um, they're wanting to make sure that our community understands if you have a, um, no party preference, how would that impact your voting in the primary elections. Um, they're also reinvigorating the use of the parks and the recreation areas. So Nasi Nampo, San Antonio, where um, they're doing two P S, but they're doing P S A's to really, um, um, make sure that they're, uh, that they're, um, providing more access to the parks and just promoting the park use through a grant that they receive. And they're also pushing, um, as part of the county libraries to partner with the help, the libraries to help, um, just more utilization of that. So any support that we, the cities can give on, they would appreciate that and vice versa. Any, anything that they can provide to us in terms of also giving um, supporting us with some of our outreach as well is really important. Um, so the other thing that they are doing, the big campaign is getting citizens more involved in government. Um, really talking to our, our individuals about their voice matters. Um, why is it important for them to get involved? So they're doing a big civic engagement push. Um, and they're working with, uh, a lot of their Comcast, Facebook, YouTube, um, and they do have, uh, they do have a Vimeo, Vimeo that they provided to us where we can go in there. And I think, I don't know if that was a survey or that was just, um, uh, recording where we can see some of the, um, some of their campaigns that are moving forward. Um, and so that's it in terms of the meetings that I participated today and tomorrow, I'm also as part of my LAFCO role, um, sit as a LAFCO commissioner. Um, there is a Calafco, Calafco Conference that's taking place in Monterey. So today I was, I participated in learning more about, today was, um, participating or learning about special districts and the Monterey Air Regional Airport. Um, I know this, the general manager talked about wanting to come and provide a presentation to the council, just in terms of what they're doing and how we can have more alignment in terms of the regional airport in Monterey. And then just as a reminder, tomorrow, we do have the Housing Policy Summit with M B I M and the three south county cities with Gonzales, Springfield, um, and Solid Ed, um, and talking about it's really gonna be focused on housing policies that can move us forward with affordable and, uh, workforce housing for our community and looking at the white paper that was, um, that was coordinated and implemented by M B I M. Okay, that's all I have. So I will turn it over to Councilwoman Cora Lejo.
Yes, thank you. I just have two, um, things to report. I attended the Blossom Tana Lights, um, also, and I was on October twelve. And then on the same week, I believe, or actually the following Monday, uh, the Monday, I attended the, um, Senator Ana Caballeros', um, four hundred thousand donation to the, um, to the district. So that was, um, actually, you know, a beautiful, uh, very encouraging, um, you know, speeches from all, um, I sincerely enjoyed all of them. Especially the, the senior, um, Mrs. Gracia, I believe was her name, who was there, um, and also the, the young, um, Hartnell student. And then, so that's all I have on reports, but I did want to let um, staff know that unfortunately due to changes to my schedule, I'm no longer gonna be able to be the alternate for the Sada Historical Society because they meet like at ten A M. Um, so just wanted to make you aware of that. Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll bring it back to agendaism for our next meeting, for an alternate. Um, yeah, we can. Yeah. Okay, yeah, so, okay. Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Chaves.
Uh, no, I did attend the Blossom Tana Lighting Ceremony. I thought that was wonderful, uh, to see all the kids out there, got to talk to a couple of the families, some of the families that I know, just kinda sitting around with them, talking to a couple of them. Um, so it was, it was wonderful to see. I remember on, uh, three occasions when I was coaching soccer, uh, we were able to bring coaches from Hartnell, uh, out and do, uh, you know, different, uh, types of clinics for kids out there at that field, um, over the years. And then we did some a couple of coaches' clinics, uh, and seeing some of those coaches that are now heading some of the bigger leagues here in the area. It's kind of good to, uh, to see the lights there now. So, um, it was, it was nice to be there. And then, um, I'll be attending the Transportation Agency in Monterey County, um, this upcoming Wednesday, next week.
Councilmember Davida.
Uh, I also attended the Blossom Tana Lighting and it was, it was amazing because, um, I was talking to Juan. Uh, and he told me that he knows my brother. And when I, when I went back and I asked my brother, he said, we used to play in the same little teams. So Blossom Tana was actually my, my brother's coach. I want, um, and I couldn't remember who he was until then, when I was, uh, uh, talking to my brother. And I, I remember exactly that, gentlemen, when I was there. We used to hang out every Sunday, uh, watching the games right there afterward. I used to work for La Plaza Vicky, so we will finish around, uh, eleven, ten, eleven, and then, and then Sundays, and we will go there every Sunday to watch the games. It was it was interesting, um, because one of the things that I thought, um, Maria, his wife, her, uh, his wife is that now every time that they pass by, they're gonna see that light and they're gonna remember that the, the parent. And it is, it is true, when you volunteer for something, you actually volunteer your family because they're usually not just the person who volunteers for coaching goes to the games. Everybody has to go. Um, I was, um, I was the only, the only guy in the field walking around with a stroller, a stroller and with two little, little girls in my hand. And so we've been doing that for a long time. My wife was the first, um, uh, referee, uh, soccer referee in Salinas years ago. And she's been playing soccer a long, long, long time. So we've been in those fields a lot. And it was, it was, um, very rewarding to see their their sadness and happiness at the same time. Sadness for remembering, uh, Blossom Tana and also the happiness that comes with the celebration of his life. Uh, I also attended the, uh, first time, yeah. The city, citizen advisory committee for that, for that, he finally got together with them. It was amazing because they, they did a summary of the things that they did to the, to the summers. Uh, they had summer, what is it, summer happy nights. They had a program that is, um, that is encouraging entrepreneurs in that it makes, and I, it was, there was several things that, uh, they do throughout the, uh, the year that encouraged, encouraged them to, to have a free mind and a free spirit, even, even though that they, they they lack of, um, as they are. But it's interesting, I, I think it was early this year that we had a chance to go to, go to the, um, a ceremony for the veterans. And it's amazing how, how much, uh, the, the staff is how much time they're putting into, uh, getting together with, with inmates and, and, uh, having a little bit of pain uh, for those guys. So, it's, it's a lot impressive. So, thanks. And I will probably, I will try to make it tomorrow. I said, I, I had my, my doctor's appointment at night, but I think I can come back and, and make it. I'll, I'll do my best to be tomorrow. Well, that circle.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to Councilmember Praising, then I'll start with Councilwoman Cora Lejo.
I have so many here, so I'll try to, to only choose one because I know it's, um, late. Um, I think I'll just, you know, we've been talking about the San Juan family and I just, um, you know, do wanna give praises to them. I know that they were, you know, it was a very touching, um, ceremony. I think it, it made it so more because they were there. Um, and, um, the San Juan, he came all the way from Bakerville just to come and you know, give his, his speech and, and give his, uh, his dad, you know, the praises and the honor that he deserved because he said that when they first opened, um, the, the family didn't have an opportunity to speak. So this was, you know, their first opportunity. And yeah, um, going along with Councilmember Cabrera kinda is beautiful that it was like for the lights. So every time they pass by there, you know, it'll be hopefully light up their heart or you know, um, or whatnot. And also, um, seeing, um, Maria Santana turn on the lights was, was real touching. Um, she was a, a neighbor of my mom's for many years. I think like ten years and I, you know, through my mom have heard so many stories about, you know, about her husband and how proud they were of him and and you know, how it affected the whole family when he passed. So I just wanted to thank, um, staff, Megan, and also Jesus um, from our community engagement um, department for reaching out to them and, and you know, for Jesus getting the, that information for each, uh, family member and reaching out to them and making sure that they got an invitation and got to speak. So I'm thanking them.
Councilwoman Chaves.
Um, so, and I'm, I want to, um, praise the community of Solid Ed for the perseverance um, for their hard work ethic and for making Solid Ed the leader in the valley. Um, I'm, I'm gonna take a little longer than, than normal in praising. Um, over the past fifty years, there have been numerous, you know, council members and mayors, uh, John Saavedra, Richard Ortiz, Ben Jimenez, David Barera, Fred de Desmond, Captain Sodas. There's been several women council members, which is Pat Stevens, Stephanie De La Rosa, Martha Camacho, Marisa Larrara, Maria Coraleto, Carla Strobridge, and our current mayor, Ana Velazquez. Uh, tonight, I wanna reflect on a wonderful past. Uh, Solid Ed over the past twenty years has seen tremendous growth, including retail, homes, and people. And I wanna praise all the past councils for their vision. We have a movie theater, Boston Park has been renovated, Toyota Park, the Little League Park. Uh, they were all renovated. They all have lights. Now we have Orchard Park. We have lights at, at Blossom Tana Park. We have a Hartnell campus in Solid Ed and soon Solid Ed will have a second campus from Hartnell that will focus on to advance the career technical education such as diesel mechanics and vocation that pay well and that are needed here in our valley. It will be similar to the Alcel Campus but with a Solid Ed twist. I decided to run for council because of two reasons. My son had an extreme fever at eight P M. one night. There was not a single store open past six P M. So I had to drive to Salinas to go pick up some infant medicine. Two, the second reason was there was an elderly woman that was killed while trying to do a U-turn to park in front of her home a little after three o'clock after picking up her grandson on Golden Road Street. She was T-boned by someone that was driving over fifty miles an hour on a residential street. Our neighborhood had been asking the council for a stop sign to slow down traffic. And after this tragedy happened, the stop sign was put up. So I wanna thank the community of Solid Ed for trusting me with the charge of being on the council for thirteen years. I've been in Solid Ed. I have seen Solid Ed change for the better in my twenty-two years of living here. My kids have grown up here. They played sports and they consider Solid Ed their home because that is all they know. They loved growing up here. They have friendships that will last a lifetime. I am announcing my resignation of being on council this evening, effective this month. As my family and I transition into our next stage in life, which includes being closer to our family. Um, it's with a heavy heart, a huge burden as I reflect on everything um, that I was part of. Um, sorry. I coached thousands of kids in baseball, basketball, soccer, um, a eucharistic minister in our church, um, our church of Solid Ed. And being on several boards over the years, I have made countless friends and I love Solid Ed. And I've forever been indebted to the community. I want to thank the staff of the city that truly care about Solid Ed. Our community, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chaves, for your service. Thank you for the thirteen years of being here and um, giving back to the community. It's not easy. We wish you much luck in your next journey and being closer to family that I know for all of us, that's really important. Okay, so we will we'll figure out.
But I'm not, but I'm gonna tell you this, I, um, um, my wife and my family live in Salinas. And when we decided to buy a house, we, I focused, I, I, I was insisted in coming to Solid Ed. Because since nineteen eighty-six, I, I knew the town community that, that, uh, that is, that is that is growing here. And I had to go so many times to save weight in Salinas because we don't have services like that. So rain or not, I, I used to go a lot because we didn't have enough medicine for my kids. So I understand, uh, what you're going through. And and I still remember the first time that you ran and that I was telling Erica that you lost because I, I forgot to come on. Yeah. He, he, he lost for one ball. And I, I, I forgot and I
That was your ball.
That was my fault. I said, I, hey, that was my fault. I'm not into it that day. And, uh, despite everything, I want you to know that I appreciated your work. And I always look at you as somebody that are with leadership skills and, and a strong character to that, to to be in a leadership position everywhere you go. And I'm, I'm, I have, I think you're gonna, you're gonna find another place where you can, um, throw yourself into that community because you are part of the community where you, wherever you go. You become a part of that community. But thank you for contributing.
Yeah, thank you. So can I finish? Let me do my praises because I'm not done yet and then we'll come back. Okay. So I think we did all the praises. So I'm doing my last one. And then we can open it up and then do the city matters and future agenda items. So I'll do my praises. So I'm gonna praise Megan because I, Megan, thank you for coming and doing a lot of what you've done for our city. So that, but I'm gonna pivot because I do wanna make sure that I acknowledge all the work that council member has, the council member Chavez has done. And you know, I know at one point we're friends and then we're not. And then I know, you know, you and I haven't seen eye to eye in many things and do things differently. But, but I will, I do need to acknowledge the contributions that you've made to the city of Solid Ed and to make the city of Solid Ed a better place. And to really make sure that you were, you know, I've always admired the tenacity that you have with your daughter Maya and always being there for her and I was being her champion. And, you know, raising two amazing, beautiful young kids and I wish you well in your next journey and Solid Ed will always have an imprint of the work that you, that you've done in this community. Councilwoman Cora Lejo?
Thank you. And yes, I, you know, and I, Ana Velazquez, I have not known Councilmember Chavez for, you know, years, a long years, but you know, I have I've known you for the last few years, maybe a little before COVID, I want to say. And I know in the short time that I have known you, maybe three, four years. You know, you, you've always been a person that I admire and I don't say that lightly and often. But you know, I, I do admire you and it's for a lot of things. It's, you know, for you stepping in when, when children needed coaching, whether it was your children playing or whether they weren't playing and it was just needed. And it takes a lot to step in and and that commitment again, we're talking about volunteering or they're just volunteering. You know, day after day after day. And, and sometimes if you're lucky, you get parents that help. If, if, if you're not lucky, you get parents that criticize. And that's not, you know, easy dealing with that. You know, also as a, as a fellow council member, you know, at times when, when I've been lost or have questions and I call you, you know, you are always patient and you always answer. You know, questions that I, that I may have, you know, and also as a as a family man, I really admire, you know, your relationship with your children and, and prioritizing them. And even now as you make this, you know, announcement today. You know, it has to do with your family. It has to do with your wife, you know, being supportive and being loving. So again, just thank you for everything. You know, you have made such a huge difference in Solid Ed. I know you were instrumental with Hartnell College. You know, with the, the theater that we have with different parks that we have and whatnot. So just thank you for, you know, for everything that you do for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to our next item on our agenda, which is our kind of future agenda items. And I'm just gonna leave it open if any of you guys have any agenda items. Oh, sorry, city manager, we forgot, city manager, I think, for I'll turn it over to Megan.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Councilmember Chavez, I'm very sad to see you move on. I, I understand why, but I know just looking back historically, I see your names on all of these ordinances as I'm going through the archives. And what a tremendous impact that you've had on the city of Solid Ed. You know, you've, you've been a champion of so many different things. And I think you were a big champion with a lot of the recreation improvements that we've seen and of course Hartnell camp, college campus and really appreciate your champion, championing all of the economic development that has occurred. And I really appreciate your support of me as a new city manager and you know, supporting staff. I think staff really will feel the loss. So thank you. And I got to also work with you before. So I knew you before and have known you to be a really good person and cooperative and easy to work with. So I'm sad to see you go, but I, I understand. And the only thing I did wanna let council know is tomorrow I'm attending a, the homeless, the Leave Me Home Plan homeless summit that will be from ten A M. to three P M. And then the mayor had already mentioned that we're having a housing summit at Hartnell at six P M. And hopefully you can be in attendance. Just getting everyone prepared and maybe you can come back for November second, Day of the Dead. A kickoff of our general plan at the community center from four to seven P M. And I took to heart some of the comments about the housing element. So Ariana and I are taking a little bit more time to make some edits based on what we've heard from the community to the housing element ahead of its submitted to H E V, which is kind of the next phase. Of course, it will come back to council. But if you have anything you wanna pass along to me as some thoughts. Please reach out to me. And then we're trying to do a better job of making sure that when people ask for things to be on the agenda that we place them on the agenda. So we do have items that were requested by council regarding food truck and planning commission for November first. And then there was a request for a report on kind of the, all of the accidents that have happened to folks related to traffic and pedestrian safety. We've had a few people hit. So we'll be coming back on November fifteenth with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Megan, for that. So with that future agenda items, thank you for listing those. I let me open it up to the council if there's any future agenda items.
I don't think it's a future agenda. I don't, I think that's what Megan, that's what you were mentioning about a moment ago when I had asked if you could give like some kind of report just for the community. I know there's been a lot of questions with regards to having, not issue found accidents involving children going to school. Okay, yeah, that's the only thing that I have, but you took care of it already. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Megan, and for me, I know I had asked before and it's not an urgency, but I do don't, I wanna make sure it doesn't get put off somewhere. But I know I had talked about developing a process for naming of the streets. I've had already numerous requests for that. I believe I had mentioned that the city of Greenfield has, may have a policy already. And then I know I had talked about the porta potties before. So can I get a report or a status on what is a resolution for that? Because it keeps, they keep popping up and it's not okay. So if there is somehow we can do something, I wanna make sure what can we do? What are the action steps? And then also in terms of the reports, if we can get an update to what maybe on the, with the chief on fentanyl, just some of the fentanyl overdoses that we've had or some of the fentanyl. I know there is a, some, what do they call them? I know there's the ones that are non-fatal and fatal. So if we can get that a report, I think that would be important. I know there was an incident with last week, was it last week on the M S T bus. And so, you know, shout out to our Solid Ed P D and our medics that were on there to be able to save a life and that they had Narcan to be able to implement. But, but I know this has been something that we supported legislation this year. I know there's a couple of bills that the state did approve, but I know it's an ongoing issue in our community and I just want us to, to see the data, the reports, and then also what else can we do as a city?
Through the chair, just for clarification on the porta potties, do you want a presentation or do you want staff to follow up with the report, written report?
Yeah, I just wanted to see what is a resolution? What can we do? And you know, where do we go from here and next steps? I know that chief has been out there enforcing. And I know that they can't always go out there and enforce. There's obviously enforcement happening, but they're still appearing. And so what are the next steps? What are, I, I'm interested in looking at what are the resolutions? You know, what can we enforce? What can't we enforce? And what do we need to?
Okay. This, I don't know if this would be helpful, but I think it might be a lot, a broader conversation about code enforcement, because I know that there's, some of these issues have been brought up, but I think there's a context of code enforcement ordinances with, with that. I mean, we can be specific to that, but maybe we could talk about some of the limitations as it relates to that. Would that be a presentation that would be useful?
Yeah, that would be helpful. But also I know this porta potty issue has been ongoing for some time now. So I mean, do we, can we what else besides code enforcement? I think it's beyond code enforcement in terms of what happens there and whether it's within our jurisdiction or not. And what enforcement mechanism capacity do we have or do we not? I guess that's what I'm just wanting to.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I got you. Okay.
Okay, so with that, then okay. Sorry, I didn't see this, Megan. Do we need to discuss that future agenda items on chapter two twelve planning agency?
Yeah, I, I, I would, yeah, we were asked a few times with that on the agenda. So this will be coming back on the first.
On November?
November first.
Okay. So with that, there's no other order of business. I wanna adjourn this meeting. I do wanna adjourn it in memory of all of the innocent lives that have been lost within as part of the Israel Hamas war that's been going on. So our prayers were with all of the innocent children, women and families that have been devastated and killed as a result of the war. So with that, no further items of business. I adjourn this meeting at ten thirty nine.